Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 27th, 2025. We're going to start out with a housekeeping item, and this is to review and sign a bill for $113.30 to the community advocate for the October 27th, 2025 legal notices. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to, to sign that bill.
Get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to the public hearings. First public hearing is the continuation from the September 29th, 2025 meeting. This is for 14 Edgemere Boulevard in the Residence B2 District, being represented by Richard Ricker. This is for a variance to Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a two-car garage 21.9 feet from the rear yard setback where 40 feet is required. Welcome, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Thank you to the board. My name is Richard Ricker. I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue here in Shrewsbury. I'm here representing the petitioners, Mr. and Mrs. Singh. Together with me tonight is Mike Capurso, who is their contractor and contractor's representative. May I approach to give you a couple of handouts?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to share that?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, yep.
Oh, I can see what it is.
This is a request, if I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is a request for a rear yard setback. As you may know, this is a long and narrow lot down on Edgemere Boulevard, and the requested, the original request was for a rear yard setback of 21 feet, nine inches. We have now adjusted the plan and reduced the size of the footprint to the, to the extent that we are asking you for a 26-foot setback from the rear yard instead of the 21.9. The original petition that we filed back in September was the Sings were looking for an ADU, and we changed the plans from an ADU because of the requirement for, I think it was a 30-foot wide fire truck driveway in order for access to an ADU. That's one of the requirements. This lot was too narrow for that, so therefore we reverted to what the Sings really want, which is the garages that they want. As you know, in New England, garages are handy and it's a good amenity, which is what they want. This is a two-family home, one for the Sings and one for a tenant of theirs. And as much as they have more than three vehicles, they wanted to garage the vehicles that they could. So this is now a request for solely for a garage. The second iteration of plans that we did, we, we had changed it to reduce the, the upstairs portion of, of the garage. The plans showed dormers and things like that. This set of plans, and you have the newest elevations, which just show basic garage with a double garage door and a single garage door, and that's, that's what you have. There's no, no stand-up storage upstairs. It's, right?
Yes, correct.
It's just, just basic storage and a crawl space upstairs. The request is borne out because of the long and narrow lot. What I've handed you was the, the GIS map as well as aerial that shows you this particular lot. As you can see, this is long and narrow. A lot of the lots in that neighborhood are small. There's no question that there are small lots there. This one happens to have room behind the house because it's long and narrow. It also has, you'll note a, I've circled it on the aerial. There's, there appears to be a section of land, landlocked behind this lot, which allows it to be buffered from the neighboring property to, that's on the street behind. So there is plenty of buffer there without a doubt, and for that reason, I would suggest to you respectfully that this request does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw, which frankly, the bylaw would, would probably encourage in New England, garaging vehicles if you can. And the bylaw basically calls for residential homes in this neighborhood, and this, as I suggested, suggested to you, is a natural amenity. So the hardship, I would suggest to you respectfully, is borne out of the size and the shape of the lot, which is long and narrow. And I had some discussion with Patty and actually Chris this afternoon, and we discussed that. And I think I'm okay with that. It is a, is one of the, one of the statutory discussions of hardship. I would suggest to you it is incidental to this lot, as you can see from the neighborhood, that this house is fronted on, the Edgemere Boulevard neighborhood. I would suggest to you that it does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw, and as much as, if we can have a garage, we'd love to have a garage in Massachusetts and in New England, because, believe it or not, it does snow here once in a while. And we can expect that we might get inclement weather, and garages are a wonderful amenity. I would also suggest to you the last tier of the four-prong variance requirement being no nuisance to the neighborhood, I would suggest to you that that is satisfied here as well, and as much as a garage should cause no one any problems. I mean, again, it's a natural thing for people to want a garage, if they can build one, if they can have one. It is for the residential use that is allowed there, and I would suggest respectfully, there's no nuisance value whatsoever. If anything, garaging, garaging your vehicles is better than not garaging your vehicles. And I would also note to you that Mike did, Michael has rebuilt this, this house for the Sings, probably, what, how many years ago?
Four to five years.
Four to five years ago.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a new house, and obviously they'd like to have a garage that goes with it. So with that, if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Before we proceed forward, we do have to get a Mullins for Dave Moore, who was not at the last meeting, so I don't have that paperwork to sign.
I can sign it with Chris whenever.
Okay.
I'll, I'll stop by tomorrow if, if that's necessary.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. All right. Let's start with board questions. Want to start over to the right. Fran?
Yes, a couple things. What is Lot 10? You said that's just a landlocked piece of property?
It's actually a part of the parcel next door.
The big parcel on the corner?
Yeah, the big parcel that has
Oh, I see.
A bunch of stuff strewn around. There's a bunch of stuff strewn around, but this, this parcel is actually owned by the same family, although it is a separate parcel on, on the plots.
Owned by the same family as who?
As that lot to the south of it.
Okay, the big lot.
Yeah, the big lot.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah.
This is strictly residential garage, right?
Yes.
No commercial vehicles or anything like that?
Correct.
I don't have any more questions.
Um, what is the, oh, that is very loud.
That's loud, huh?
What is the current condition of the backyard? Is it all lawn in the backyard right now?
It's a little rough. Yeah, a mix.
Okay, but it's pervious?
Yes.
Okay, so you're adding, extending a driveway, adding a garage, adding a lot of impervious. What is the plan for water drainage?
That would require a stormwater permit to do this, and that is another filing that has to be done. But that has to be done in any building now in Shrewsbury.
Right.
So we would expect that even if, even if there was a necessity for detention basin underneath, then that would be a requirement that has to be met.
As long as that's being addressed, because they're changing a lot of the previous plan back there.
Any building like this needs a stormwater.
Yep, absolutely. All right, I think that I am good, then.
Anne?
I don't have anything. Thank you. Dave?
I don't have anything.
I just want to understand, so when you go from the ADU to a garage, can you just describe, describe what, there's different uses for a garage versus an ADU. So I'm just trying to understand in my mind why they went from an ADU to a garage.
Right, now there's no living space. So there's no separate living space, no separate, an ADU is basically a dwelling unit, whereas the garage is not. So that's
But the original ADU plans was a garage with a unit on top?
With an ADU above, yes.
I understand. Okay. So we're removing the upstairs living space?
Yes.
It's simply a garage?
Yes.
Understood. Okay, okay. Fran?
You're going to finish that level at all, or is it just going to be open joists?
Just open joists.
Okay. No.
Okay.
It'll require insulation of some sort because of the building code.
Okay, I just wondered, you're not going to have stairways up to that level for storage or anything?
No.
Okay.
Okay, all right. We'll proceed on. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I can move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Do you need a motion for the, the approval?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the application of Richard Ricker for the property located at Edgemere Boulevard, Residence B2 District, for a variance from Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a two-car garage 21 and 9 tenths feet from the rear yard setback when 40 feet is required.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it, does it matter that I, that it changed to a three-car garage, Chris?
What do you mean, from?
From the two-car garage because of the double door?
The size didn't change.
No.
The size was reduced, so I think that's what.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
Okay. Second hearing of this evening. This is to hear the appeal of 335, I'm sorry, to hear the appeal of Kevin Keeler, 31 Solomon Pond Road, Northborough, Mass., to a varie, for variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct a deck 35.2 feet from the rear yard setback where 40 feet is required upon property located at 355 Grafton Street in the Residence A zoning district. Premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 41, Plot 012005. Good evening, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Kevin Keeler, Permit Solutions. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for hearing our application. I'm representing Raj and Uma. Uma's with me tonight. They own the property. They have a rapidly growing family. When they purchased the property at 355 Grafton Street, they realized that at some point they would have to add on. The house does not really have a large great room or a family room, and so now they're, they're in need because the kids are getting much older. And so they're proposing to add a 16 by 42-foot addition to the back of the house, right here. And the addition is not in question. It is within the setbacks, no problem. But they're going to lose their existing deck in the process of putting on the addition. And so what we're proposing to do is, instead of just a small little landing and a set of stairs, because this is off of the second floor, we're proposing to add a 9.5 foot deep deck off the back. So 9.5 is about the minimum amount of usable area that we feel is, is, you know, usable for a deck area. Unfortunately, that puts the deck 4.8 feet into the required 40-foot setback in the residential A zone. It's an unusual-shaped lot, and the house is set pretty far back. They don't want to put an addition on the front of the house because they like the looks of the house, and they certainly don't want to leave the neighborhood because they like the neighborhood. The, the, the deck and the addition cannot be seen from the road. It's been designed to fit the look of the house. We feel variance for the deck would not be a detriment to the neighborhood. Apparently, the neighbors feel that way as well, because we've spoken to them all, and they think it's a great idea. And we have a supporting letter, letter from the next-door neighbor that's in your package. And so we respectfully request that the zoning board grant a variance of 4.8 feet so we can accommodate the deck and proceed forward with the construction.
Thank you. Fran, you want to start up?
Um, I was looking at the plot plan. If I can find it again, there it is. You're showing erosion control.
Yeah, this has already gone to conservation.
Okay.
And been approved.
What's that planting area? I, I'm trying to understand what's happening behind you. Is that just wetlands back there?
It's just wetlands back there.
How far backs it go?
I, I really, to be
Yes.
Be honest with you, I don't know. I didn't do the conservation filing. I
Couple hundred feet?
Yeah, a couple hundred feet at least, I would imagine, yeah.
Okay. So you're put, you're bumping out the back of the house, and you're bumping the deck with it?
Mm-hmm.
And the deck encroaches now?
Correct.
Okay.
The new deck would, yes. Not the addition.
What am I seeing on the top of the plot plan there that I can't under, is that retaining wall or something there?
Let me look at the one you're looking at. This one's a more simplified version.
This is Jarvis's plan?
Yeah, yes, I got it. It's just, the one I have doesn't have all of those details on it because they simplify it.
Buffer in the front, too?
So you're, so that's the showing that the house itself is sitting in the 100-foot buffer, buffer zone?
No, I understand that. There's a structure.
There's some, some garden features on the top side of the plan.
I don't know what that would be. Northwest, west end of the, no, that's the north side, north side of the property. Outside the erosion barrier that you're showing, there is some structure.
I, I think it's just like landscaping area.
Raised garden beds.
Does anybody else see that?
Chris says it's raised garden beds.
Raised garden beds.
I'm sorry?
Raised garden beds?
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I believe. It is raised garden bed, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, this is wetlands all around?
There's quite a bit of wetlands in the, in the area. There's not wetlands on either side of the property, just behind the property.
I see. 100-foot river buffer. Okay, I don't have any more questions, Madam.
Okay, Megan?
Um, thank you for all the information presented. I think I don't have any questions for this one either.
Okay.
I'm good.
Anne?
Thanks, I'm all set.
Okay, Dave?
I think the amount of relief you're requesting is, is actually quite modest for what you're trying to do here. Like you said, the addition itself for the home is, is by right, and you're just doing the, the deck to go with it. And the deck, is the deck smaller than the existing deck?
Yes, it is. Yeah. We pick, we, we try to make it as small as possible and still make it usable, you know?
Yep.
Minimizing encroachment.
But yeah, I can see from your plot plan, the topography here, because of the wetlands behind you, you definitely have some slopes that you're dealing with there. There's a brook that runs behind there, and then you're, and beyond that is the, the Highway 140. So I don't see any issues with this.
I agree with all the comments that have been made. All right, so public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on the matter? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please?
Move to adjourn the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the application of Kevin Keeler for 355 Grafton Street, located in Residence A Zone, for a variance from Section 7, Table 2, to construct a deck 35 and 2 tenths feet from the rear yard setback where 40 feet is required.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You as well. Next on the agenda, this is a continuation from our September 29th meeting. This is to hear the appeal of 409 South Street, CPC Land Acquisition Company LLC for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law 40B, Section 20 to 23, to permit the construction of a 196-unit multifamily residential development. Good evening.
Good evening. Chris Copeland with CPC Land Acquisition. With me tonight is Phil Cordero from A&amp;M Civil Engineering, and Bob Micho from MDM Transportation. If you recall from where we left off last time, we did not have any peer comments. We have civil peer comments tonight. I believe the peer reviewers are in the audience here, and we'd like to go over some of the more technical aspects and present to you tonight the civil engineering piece. We can talk about water and sewer if we have to, and then we're going to talk about transportation. We also want to introduce some different exterior colors as a result of discussions with the, with the neighbors. Everyone can see that?
Yes.
Great. Just a reminder of where the location is. The corner of South Chestnut, just near the intersection of Route 20. This is the overall layout. We're talking about 196 rental units, 40B project, 49 of which will be affordable at 80% AMI. We do have 283 parking spaces. I think one of the things that we'll talk about tonight, I don't believe the civil peer picked up the garage parking in the lower flats units in the back, but we'll get to that. And again, as a result of discussions with one of the butters and the neighbor across the street, not preferring a stark white color, something a little too bright, so we muted the colors, took it down to a more gray tone with dark sash windows. We updated the renderings for tonight. You can file this in the city portal, on the town portal when we're done. So nothing new here other than the exterior color. I just wanted to share these as a result of talking to one of the neighbors. And at this point, we can turn it right over and get into the aspects of civil engineering.
Okay, thank you. Can I just click to advance? For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates, having a principal business address at 10 Main Street in Lakeville. We were here before. Obviously, we didn't present to you the civil engineering and the site planning design aspects that went into the project. I'd like to very briefly just walk the board through those conditions, and then we can dovetail that into the information that we received from Graves Engineering as part of the peer review, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has, since we never really, again, delved into the technical aspects. As Chris mentioned, you know, we're dealing with a piece of land that I was actually affiliated with a potential site development on here several years ago, where we studied the land and its ability to suit development. It never came to pass, but obviously it is a good piece of property that if developed in the right manner, can certainly support the 186 units that are in front of the board for this application. For those familiar with it, just as a, as a refresher, it is at the intersection of Chestnut Street and South Street. It's the Russell Farm property. For those further familiar with it, you'll recognize that there is tremendous slope out here. The land's essentially slopes from Chestnut Street along the left side of your image down to the right side, which is a stream bed on the back of the property. Now, what's shown on the plan, what our development plans are focused on, is approximately 11 acres of the former Russell Farm. We have divided out the lands owned by the Russells, so we've only integrated in the, that portion of the land necessary to support this development, and the remainder of the land will remain under the ownership of the Russells, or whatever they choose to do with it. In terms of topography, we are looking at a, of a delta from approximately elevation 530 at the street side at Chestnut Street, down to about 450 at the lower end of the wetlands. So we have a tremendous amount of grade change. So as a consequence, what the development has really focused its efforts on is providing the development as close to Chestnut Street as possible, to work with the topography as much as possible, to preserve as much of the open land space as possible. So a lot of the things that we're going to talk about is, tonight, is how the grade is terraced here, how the stormwater functions and is really shrunk-wrapped to the site, and how the development, as proposed by CDP, utilizes buildings and footprints and layouts that accommodate this type of, of drastic grade change. So as Chris mentioned, 186 units, as you enter in off of Chestnut Street, and again, those familiar with Chestnut Street will always also recognize that there's tremendous downgrade as you go towards the intersection of South Street, and that was important for us to recognize as it primarily was the constraint on, on this land. We sought to have a center-integrated driveway for a lot of symmetry. So as you enter into the property, we have a site driveway that meets all adequate safety site distances and intersection, intersection distances and brake distances. And on either side of that common driveway, we have the two mid-rise buildings totaling 100 units in consolidation, three stories to each. And we, again, we sought to have that equidistant approach, that sense of arrival, that flattened driveway where anybody coming into the property has that welcoming sense. Once you get beyond the two buildings, it opens up to the driveway to have the parking behind those buildings, so shielded from the public view along Chestnut Street. The buildings will obscure the parking areas. And then as the first sense of mitigation for the grade, that central corridor driveway will then have a transitional element where we'll move downslope as steeply as we can. We do need to navigate accommodations for accessibility and pedestrian accommodations, but we do move to a lower terrace, to the village flats at the bottom of the slope, which will have six village flat units, and as the name implies, those are very much flat. So we really needed to create two essential terraced plateaus, one for the mid-rise parking, one for the mid-rise buildings and its parking, and then one for the village flats below. And because of the grade change, as it continues to move in an easterly direction, we're also able to accommodate walkout units on the lower three village flat units. So there's another delta of approximately 11 feet from the gray parking surface area that you see on the imagery to the green, which is on the lower side of those units. And we'll, we'll accommodate that by adding in some retaining walls, adding in some landscape steps, and making sure pedestrians and the fire department can get from the upper level to the lower level as they've requested. Now, mitigation for the grade within the site between the two terraced areas of the mid-rise buildings and the village flats, alongside behind Building 1, which is on the planned north side of the imagery, we do have slope because we can accommodate a three-to-one slope, a nice landscaped slope as we move down between those two product types. On the lower area, because we do have the larger field massing parking area, we do have to accommodate with some retaining walls. Now, those retaining walls will be terraced retaining walls. We're, instead of having one large vertical wall, we do have several shorter walls in series, so it can accommodate some planting levels to soften that visual scape between the two elevation changes. Adjacent to Building 1, adjacent to our offset, offside of Butter to the north of us, which is the, the Doggy Day Care, we do have to mitigate some grade there. So we do have a retaining wall located on the north side of Building 1, generally about five to seven feet in terms of average height. The, the Doggy Day Care is actually above us in terms of elevation. So we have mitigated some natural screening and buffering by having the site development lower than the adjacent property to the north of us. On the south side of us, as we approach South Street, keeping in mind as a, as a reminder, Chestnut Street continues to slope downhill, South Street continues to do that. So we're really mitigating a lot of grade change across this intersection, across this development. So Building 2, which is located at the South and Chestnut intersection, that's going to be supported by a series of slopes and a series of retaining walls as you move along the South Street side of the project. And that will continue along, wrapping around towards the village flats area. And that's borne out of necessity in order to make sure we And that's born out of necessity in order to make sure we can accommodate the internal circulation accessibility of the development, as well as the natural grade adjacent to us on the roadways, on the municipal roadways. Now, an incidental benefit of that is because where the site wants to take a deep dive, we lose approximately 50, 60 feet from Chestnut Street to the back of our development. And the terraced plateaus that I mentioned to the board to support this development, we have opted to do all of our stormwater management underneath the parking lot. While we certainly have additional land area available, we could do surface basins here, the further out, the further easterly we go, the more disturbance we create, the more slope we start to impact. So as a development technique, the applicant opted to put everything underneath the parking lots in favor of preserving the trees and the wooded area that we have at the back of the site. So that allows us to preserve three to four acres of the 11 acres of land that we have available, shown in the red image on the screen. The other thing that it affords us the opportunity to do and to say to this board is that as we move downslope, we do encounter a stream channel. There is bordering vegetated wetlands around there. We have had it delineated by Goddard Wetland Consultants. We have not had it affirmed through the conservation process, but based on our familiarity and experience, it is pretty clear and distinct, so we're confident in terms of where it is. And then we've mitigated at least 100 feet off of the bordering vegetated wetland to preserve all of the jurisdictional buffer that the Conservation Commission would otherwise retain jurisdiction over. In point of fact, we actually have at least 150 feet of that buffer remaining, based on the site plans as proposed, but we wanted to well steer clear and maintain all of the natural woodland environment and conservation lands, excuse me, as much as possible. Now, the other concern that we do have is circling back to Chestnut Street. As I mentioned, we do want to have a sense of arrival, the common driveway, the common symmetry between the two mid-rise buildings on either side of us. In order to address some of the concerns created by the steepness of Chestnut Street, the steepness of our site, we are working up site plans that, as part of this application, we will work with the town to regrade Chestnut Street to acceptable slopes and rework the intersection with Chestnut Street and South Street, working to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And MDM is going to speak upon that as part of the traffic discussion here this evening. But I wanted to mention it because it is a primary driver to how we determined the site layout, how we factored in the site grades, and how we can really accommodate those terraces that identified for the two types of products. In terms of, oh, sorry, thank you. So what I've brought here, moving away from the color plan, I did bring the technical engineering plans, to the extent that the board wants to get in the weeds on them. We do have 283 parking spaces. As Chris mentioned, it's a combination of surface parking and garaged parking within the townhome units. Along the upper terrace, we do have 30 detached standard garage spaces. Those will be amenity-based for the residents of either Building 1 or 2, the mid-rise buildings. In front of Building 2, we also have 36 carport, covered carport spaces. Again, some amenity-based, it provides shading, it provides opportunity for solar canopy, should CDP wish to add those. And then along the lower tier, surface-based parking with, again, 12 internal parking spaces, garage parking spaces associated with the village flats. We did bring into the equation, I'm going to fast-forward through the utilities and the grading for just a moment, because it's important that the board recognize, part of our conversation and part of the site design was ensuring that we have adequate circulation for fire apparatus. And the green image on the plan is using the Shrewsbury Response Vehicle, Tower 1, the largest vehicle. We wanted to ensure that they can access that main central site driveway, circulate, around the two upper terraced parking fields in front of Buildings 1 and 2, and then continue downslope to service the village flats area. On either end of the village flats, you'll notice the symmetry of the rounded edge. That is to provide a hammerhead turnaround, so it's effectively a three-point turn for the fire department to go down, access the area next to the village flats, turn their apparatus around, and then ultimately leave the site. We did already receive preliminary comment from the fire department, and as part of that review, paraphrasing, of course, they determined the site layout to be generally acceptable to them. They did ask us to provide some clarifying information for them, which we supplemented our original filing with, with this board. And the plan that's on the screen, I won't get into the weeds on all of the red lines and dots and dashes, but it's our information to show the fire department, to show this board, our compliance with the National Fire Protection Standards and the Massachusetts Amendments, to make sure that all of the points of our buildings, all of the buildings, are accessible to the fire department from staged vehicles, so they can access the site, they can stage the vehicles, they can fight a fire. We have hydrants throughout the site at locations that we've determined, based on experience and familiarity. We did get some feedback from the fire department. We've incorporated that into the revised plan. Should we leave the world of the zoning board and we have not reached conclusion, we remain committed to working with the fire department on finding the exact location for those hydrants, essentially to their satisfaction. One of the other comments that we did get from the fire department is because we have the walkouts along the lower village flats, they wanted to ensure there was a method that they could access that lower level, because there is 11 feet of grade change. So the original application material submitted with the comprehensive permit had a central corridor with a central staircase down to the lower level, fully amenitized, fully landscaped. It'll be integrated into the environment, so it'll be aesthetically pleasing, but it provides a stairwell access to the lower level. The fire department has asked us to add a second one, which we did to the northerly portion of the site, generally located where the cursor is moving here. And then along the southerly side, they felt the slope access was adequate, so no stairwell on the southerly part of the site, but we will make sure that they can navigate that slope, and again, get to the lower portion of the site. Circling, I'm going to go back, sorry, Chris, jumping around a little bit to keep everybody on their toes. Circling back to the grading and drainage a little bit, we did get the Graves Engineering peer review, so I'll let them opine to the board on their review of the stormwater. What I would assert to the board is that the site design that's in front of you will meet all of the Town of Shrewsbury stormwater requirements. It also meets all of the Mass. DEP stormwater requirements. So all of those calculations were provided. Graves performed their review on what we believe to be a technically proficient application. They did note a handful of comments on there. Again, Graves can speak upon that. We have no doubt that we can absolutely satisfy those comments, add some clarifications, deal with a few typographical errors, and deliver a fully vetted-out plan in terms of stormwater that mitigates stormwater runoff in this location for all storm events, and it's done through the underground stormwater vaults. When the stormwater is released, it does want to continue to move downslope, which is a very steep slope. So we have wanted to make, we did want to make sure we have integrated in very large riprap zones, heavy-duty stone. So as that concentrated water is being slowly released from our stormwater system, it's forced to trickle, to drain over that stone with the intent that it slows it down. So when it does merge with the natural woodland environment and the organic topsoil that's out there, it's moving at a velocity that doesn't scour out the rest of the slope, and it mimics the pre-development conditions where it simply wants to run along the surface. Some of it will integrate back into the soil, but it'll ultimately run down to the brook at the bottom of the hill. We provided a full detailed utility plan. We will seek a municipal sewer connection and also a water connection. And then we will also coordinate with Selco on relocation and extension of electrical services to serve this project, where everything on the site will be located underground. It is an all-electric project, so we want to recognize the stretch code environment that is being permitted under. As such, the site will also be accompanied by electric car charging stations throughout the development, and it'll be proportional to the number of parking spaces that we are providing on-site, and that'll be in accordance with the code. Some of those will be available at first occupancy. The rest of those will be made available as the project continues to grow and the electric car charging demands continue to increase.
If I can just interject real quick. We did talk to them. We do have a cost of about $300,000 or $400,000, and we do want to put the lines along Chestnut Street underground as well. And we'll work with them to locate transformers and switchgear.
Terrific. So that was the next piece, so he got it. So we're looking to put everything under the ground, which we think will be vast improvements along this intersection and this corridor. In the packages, I don't have them on the slides here, we do have a fully detailed landscape plan, well complementary to the architecture, well complementary to the site, recognizing all the grade challenges, the retaining walls, the fencing. So it really speaks to how the environments can complement the architecture and the landscape can do the same. Inclusive of that is a Dark Sky compliant photometric plan, where we will use LED fixtures, we will use shields. So at the property corners, we'll have no light spill over onto either the public roadways or the adjacent properties next to us. We did receive comment from the, I guess, the former town engineer now, during the initial submission regarding the sewer connection, which we are seeking a sewer connection down on South Street, simply because of how low it is. He provided some comments. We made some revisions to the sewer routing in terms of the connection to South Street, basically some elevational changes, location of manholes. Nothing that changes his opinion, again, I'm paraphrasing, on the ability for us to connect. It was really some nuanced engineering design that he wanted us to factor in. So that information has already been submitted back to the board, I guess, maybe four or five weeks ago at this point, just capturing and documenting out those changes. I think all totaled, we have about 35,000 gallons per day from this development, theoretical design, that'll go into the sewer system. On practicality, the actual usage tends to operate about 50% to 60%, so we're looking at about 18,000, 19,000 gallons per day. So we will, of course, continue to work with the engineering department on final coordination of those sewer connections, and then ultimately, we will connect similarly with our water network. We've had preliminary discussions on both, and again, no deal breakers in terms of you can't do this, other than they want to reserve the right to have the consultant, the town's consultant, study those additional capacities, the draw and the water system, and then also the additional capacity for the sewer, which we'll continue to work with them on. So I think, from a site planning perspective, I think that's what I would present to you tonight. We will talk about the intersection, since it's part of the site slides, but I'll let MDM opine upon it further. We did include this cross-section, as shown on the screen, in the original comprehensive permit package, but we are continuing to work with the town that this intersection design is continuing to evolve. We want to mitigate the geometry so it has adequate site distances, adequate clearances for vehicles. So this layout, as initially provided, is going to change a little bit as we continue to go down this journey on the intersection. Any immediate questions on site design, or we can continue into our traffic discussion?
I would, do you, Chris, do you have full-size drawings of this?
Yeah, we can.
I'll make appointment with you to come by and look at them. Because I can't zoom in enough to see the plot, plan, the grading, any of these things that I need, I think I need to look at. I can't make sense out of these, because they're too small. That's all there is to it. Other than that, I mean, there's a lot I haven't been able to chew on in all of this yet. I mean, there's stormwater analysis, or 300 pages of that. There's nine pages of waivers. Where do we, do we have an opinion from planning on any of that yet?
We're not into the waiver section at this point.
No, in the waivers.
We're going to hold off on that, on the waivers.
I'm sorry, madam.
We're going to hold off on the waiver part until next meeting?
Yeah, we'll provide, so similar to the other 40B process, we'll provide a recommendation of the waivers that have been requested.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Then I'm going to let it go for now, then, madam.
Yeah, we can go back, because I think there's going to be more. If we want to, if we have specific questions now, you want to just continue on and then get, yes, okay, if we continue on, that would be great.
We can walk page by page through the stormwater reports.
No, thank you. That would be fine. No. Graham will make an appointment to do that, but we're not going to do that tonight. Thank you.
I'll sit in his office and bug him.
There we go.
So continuing for the record, Robert Micho, the Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. I'm going to keep my commentary at a very high level. This will be the first time that we discuss transportation in any depth. We understand that peer review is still ongoing. I will point out that peer review and other projects have very much been the focus of this particular area of town recently, so some of the information that we presented here, you know, is a commonality, if you will, to other projects, and might be familiar to the board. Phil just gave you a very good overview of the site itself. Our focus is really going to be to start to discuss what the overall impact is from a transportation perspective, and then to begin to zero in on the access-related aspects of the project, as Phil had mentioned, are still in process and being refined, particularly at the intersection of Chestnut Street and South Street. At a more global level, I think the board is familiar with the proximity of how the site sits relative to both Route 9 and Route 20. We've looked at both sides of that more global aspect of the project and have studied the intersections on both ends of South Street, on the Route 9 side, as well as the Route 20 side, shown in red dots, and inclusive of the Chestnut Street connection to Route 9. So those really serve as the primary gateways to this property. We've gone out in May of this year, inventoryed those same locations. Some of those are common locations that have been recently studied by other projects. So we know that the data points that we're referring to actually show some consistency from recent filings and analysis as well. The overall summary is that we have, in fact, already consulted with Mass. DOT. We did that very early on in the process. They've confirmed with us that an access permit will not be required for this project as it has no frontage along Route 20, and they've made a determination that the project impact itself is insignificant as it relates to the state highway system. The traffic is a, the project is a very modest traffic generator at 196 units. We're talking about peak hour trip activity of less than 80 vehicles per hour, roughly about one per minute on average. And those project trips will be well-accommodated within a very significant improvement that the board is aware is ongoing on Route 20, the Route 20 Quarter Improvement Project. That project is advancing past the 75% design level at this point. We expect it to be in construction in 2027 through TIP fund. The project analysis, which I'll review very briefly, indicates that there's adequate capacity and infrastructure to support this level of traffic for this project, with, in fact, de minimis, changes in levels of service queuing and operations. Really, the focus then becomes local intersection design and control, pedestrian accommodation features, emergency access and circulation, all elements that are touched on in the development agreement that is memorialized with the town. And finally, as it relates to transportation demand management, as any residential project does these days, there'll be a package of initiatives that aim to reduce trip-making to the extent possible and to encourage alternative travel modes. This, what's shown on the screen now is a snapshot of the Route 20 Quarter Improvements. This is the intersection of Route 20 at South Street. That intersection will look vastly different than it does today. There'll be a widening of Route 20 for additional lane capacity on Route 20 as well as on South Street, the introduction of a multi-use path along the southerly edge of Route 20, and then jumping up to the northerly edge, sidewalk enhancements as well. And those improvements will continue to the east where it crosses over South Street on the other side with certain turn restrictions, additional turn lanes, and other pedestrian accommodating features. So, this infrastructure I referenced earlier is in process with a construction start date of 2027. From a project impact perspective, this is a very high-level graphic with large arrows that are intended to provide a snapshot of how much additional traffic this might generate along certain roadways, segments, Route 9 to the north of the page, the bottom of the page, Route 20, and the South Street quarter central. You'll see in the weekday morning peak hour, this is a commuter period, that trip activity overall is less than a total of 80 vehicle trips per hour, and when you distribute those trips among the various means of getting to and from employment centers, that the raw increase, if you will, in traffic at any particular intersection is less than about 20 vehicles per hour. It's a very manageable number, and likewise, in the evening, we have very similar trends. From a capacity standpoint, we've modeled each of the gateway locations I mentioned earlier. There's a letter grade assigned to each one of those locations that is reflecting the level of delay that currently exists, is projected to exist seven years from now, independent of the project, but inclusive of other area projects, and there are many. And then finally, what the incremental change in those operating levels might be as a function of these 80 or so trips per hour. And you'll see that there are a lot of As, Bs, Cs, and Ds in this chart, depending on which intersection you look at. And in an urban environment like this, the level of service D criteria is considered an acceptable operating standard for an intersection. That is, in fact, the case for each and every one of the gateway locations that we've studied as part of the project. And you'll see that none of those letter grades change as a result of the project, with the exception of the South and Chestnut intersection, which today operates at level of service A in the morning and will drop to a B because of the additional trips, but well below capacity with very little delay. So, from a capacity and operating standpoint, this is not a high-impact project, and certainly MassDOT recognized that as well when they made the determination of no need for access permit. So, our focus became the access to the property, and Phil had just mentioned that there is an ongoing effort to evaluate proper design of the Chestnut Street approach to South that's shown here in this yellow circle. This is an excerpt from the originally submitted comp-permit plan. What we've done is we've provided, in red line format, right, a concept that would essentially redesign the intersection to allow for better maneuverability for school buses in particular and for emergency fire apparatus. And the guiding criteria there would be that the fire department does not want to have vehicles unnecessarily encroach onto opposing lanes if they're turning onto or off of a street. And similarly, for school buses, you want them to be able to stay in their own lane, so to speak. So, those swept paths, those maneuvering requirements are really what are driving the geometry and the need for what is now shown as a red line format drawing here. That, in fact, has started to make its way into certain of the site plans, which will continue to be the process. So, in yellow here, this is an excerpt of one of the more recent site plans that now incorporates that geometry at that particular location. The swept path analysis in this particular example on the screen is for the Tower One vehicle in Shrewsbury, which indicates the ability to come to or from the property without those encroachments that I had mentioned earlier, likewise, exiting the property from Chestnut onto South. School buses were also modeled in this example. They have a very similar wheel track as a fire truck. So, we know that the geometry here can work in this format, but we are still looking for formal input, if you will, from the engineering department and perhaps through the peer review process to solidify that design. Secondly, from a pedestrian accommodation perspective, the development agreement that is in place with the town recognizes the need and the commitment by the proponent to advance sidewalk improvements along not only Chestnut Street but South Street, and this is a very high-level concept of where those connections may be possible or are being considered in a dash line format. So, we've got the sidewalk elements along Chestnut Street here, and then we've got an existing sidewalk system shown in orange, which exists north of the property or page left in this example. That existing sidewalk abruptly terminates several hundred feet from Chestnut Street, and the concept here, bless you, is to extend the sidewalk along either the east or the west side of South Street so that this connectivity entirely from the development to Chestnut and continuing on South with a potential crossing of South Street to provide that connectivity to the existing sidewalk system. We're also evaluating the possibility of a future sidewalk connection to the south of the site on South Street, although that is very much challenged by the topography that Phil had mentioned earlier. So, just for context, this is a view looking from Chestnut Street toward Route 20. The site is on the left side of this drawing. The potential future sidewalk connection on that edge of South Street, that's the easterly edge, really becomes pretty significantly topographically challenged. You can see the height of some of the structures here on the page left where that's roughly about 10 to 11 feet above the grade of South Street. So, to introduce some kind of a sidewalk element along here will pose some topographic challenges. This emphasizes it a bit more. This is a view from Route 20 toward Chestnut Street with the site on the right-hand side. You can see that rather steep topography. We'll also point out that from a right-of-way perspective, the right-of-way on the west or left side of this drawing is almost right up to that pavement, right? So, there are definitely some challenges there that we're in process of continuing to evaluate. As we look to the north, this story becomes easier and better in that if you were to stand at Chestnut and look north toward Route 9 in this picture, you'll see that the topography is a little gentler. You'll also see that there may be opportunity on the west or left side of this drawing for a sidewalk alignment along that edge, although it's complicated by utility poles. As we continue toward Route 9 further, we eventually get to a point where the existing sidewalk becomes evident, and there's a possibility of providing a crossing at that location with appropriate controls that would connect to a sidewalk on the east side or alternatively would continue on the west side. This is another view looking from where the existing terminus of the sidewalk ends here. Chestnut Street is on the left side of this drawing, further down the hill. So, this gives you a better context for what we're assessing for sidewalk connections on either side of that street, which are, in our view, much more viable than they would be south of the property. And finally, transportation demand management is a consideration for the project. As part of a tenant welcome package, there'll be initiatives to identify and promote various transportation modes, including the use of public transportation, Worcester Regional Transit Authority bus services, et cetera. Phil mentioned earlier, the electric vehicle charging stations throughout the property, excellent pedestrian infrastructure both within and connecting to, you know, the community at large, secure bike parking, and the unbundling of parking or separate charge for parking, if you will. So, that's a high-level view of transportation. We look forward to the peer review process and getting into some of the nuances of some of the designs that we just mentioned for the intersection and the sidewalks. Thank you, and I'll hand it back to Chris.
That's our presentation for tonight. One other bit of information I wanted to add, the lower village flats in the back, we did want to keep those white. That wasn't clear in the renderings in that case, but since they're down the hill, we wanted it to be a little brighter and mute the front a little bit because the buildings are a little bigger. But anyways, that's our presentation. Open to comment? Thank you.
I don't have any comments at this time, madam.
Can you speak to a plan for maybe both deliveries and short-term parking for ride shares or anything like that? Do you have dedicated parking for that, or where do you anticipate that happening?
Let me go back to this. We don't, so, we've been involved in other projects where they sort of ask us to do a mandated parking space, and then we've gone to those people and they say we don't want it, we don't want to be here, and I've seen that before, but in a parking ratio of 1.4, we think there's going to be ride-sharing, Uber, car-sharing, things of that nature anyways, and we will have floating spaces up front for patrons to come in. I think we could put some signage there for ride-sharing in a place right around Building Two, around the front amenity, for folks to hail a ride or wait indoors if it's raining, which leads right to the lease office.
Regarding the Chestnut improvements, is it only the left-hand side, as you're looking at the plan, that you're proposing to widen, the right-hand side would stay the same?
Essentially, that's correct. Yeah, so, if you go back to the red line drawing itself, Chris, the left side of this drawing, which is the north side of the intersection, would essentially be almost where it is today, frankly, and the right edge, the southerly part, would essentially be where it is today. So, we're working within that same envelope. What we're really changing is what is today a very large island feature there and replacing it with scored concrete or traversable design elements so that, to the extent a fire truck needs to swing wide or a school bus does, they're not in the other lane, but they're going over this feature.
Yep.
Yeah. So, it is a little bit tighter than it is today. It's a little more traditional than what you have today. Today, it feels like two separate intersections, so it'll be a lot cleaner. And really, the challenge there is to a grading challenge, really, on the left side, the north side of the intersection where there's a residential home. So, those are the types of details that we're, you know, still working through, but that essentially, we're working within that same envelope, but really modifying the central portion of it.
And that side of the street is still your parcel, correct? So, that there's no issue of?
It's our seller.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We have coordination.
Yes, okay. I may have more, but I can, I know some people go first.
Yeah, thank you for the level of detail. This is a lot of new information, so I'll just save any questions I have till later.
I am encouraged that you are taking such a deep look at this particular intersection. I used to drive this every day in the efforts to pick up my son from daycare, and it was, it's a tragedy what's there right now. And so, encouraged that you're looking at the grading because, I mean, if you've been out there, you've seen the score marks in the asphalt from vehicles bottoming out, and I've seen a lot of near misses in that intersection. So, I'm very pleased to see that you're taking the treatment of that.
Thank you. I have quite a few comments. I'm going to go through them very quickly, and they're following the presentation. So, first, I just want to say, changing the color due to the neighbors' feedback is both respectful and mindful of your neighbors, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you for doing that. I love that you're preserving your open space. I think that's a really big benefit to both the people that will be ultimately living there, but also benefits the town. I like the parking behind the buildings. I think the sense of arrival definitely connects with the integrity of your project, so thank you for that. The renovation to Route 20, to Dave's comment, huge benefit to our town. That is a very difficult, very difficult area right now, so I think that's going to help a lot. Appreciate the fire department vehicle movement. That was very helpful, the way you presented it, as was the underground storage water vaults. I appreciate that a lot. I think your stormwater plan is good. And one question regarding the traffic, did you take into account the Emerald Run project when you were doing your traffic counts?
Yes, there are a dozen projects that we've taken into account, including that project. So, you know, we've documented in great detail the effect of the cumulative development that is going on in town, all the way from logistics facilities to other residential projects, commercial projects, and, you know, the net effect of those is why Route 20 is being improved the way that it is. And cumulatively, those projects on South Street aren't going to have so much of an effect because most of those trips are actually going to stay on the Route 20 or the Route 9 quarter, but they have all been fully accounted for.
Okay, thank you. Which, the next point, the low impact that this project is going to have, based on the analysis that you've presented, is helpful to us in our decision-making. School buses, where, what, where will they be going?
I think we have a mandate in our development agreement to provide that in the front of the site. I don't know if that's shown. Is that in there, Phil?
What we have is, we have a collection point on the sidewalk.
We talked about it being right in here.
Okay.
Just a shelter, a small shelter?
Yep.
For buses? Because I don't believe buses will come into private developments.
Correct, correct. Okay, right. And then lastly, I have a lot more comments, but thank you very much. I think this presentation was really helpful. Lot of information was provided to us, so we have a lot of thinking that we need to do. And I would just lastly say that the sidewalk improvements, I think, will also greatly benefit our town. So, the impact on our town is more positive than negative, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Me too, thank you.
Right, any other comments?
Our peer reviews are also available if they want to, if you'd like to have them make some comments this evening. I know the peer review is still ongoing, but if you'd like to recognize them, we have civil and traffic, and I believe water and sewer as well.
Sure, if they would like to.
My name is Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering. I'm the civil peer reviewer. We issued our letter the other day, October 23rd, Thursday. I'd like to keep my remarks fairly brief and rather than go through the whole letter, there's a number of what I would call more along the lines of housekeeping types of comments, but I'd like to call the board's attention to the following two, four, six, seven comments that I'm going to go through. Numbers one, two, 10, 12, 15, 18, and 21. I'd like to speak to those and give you explanation that probably helps both the board as well as the developers do. Comment number one is simply loading of parking spaces. The loading requirements, I believe we talked or had discussion about this with another project when I was in attendance at a public hearing recently. But anyways, loading spaces near the building entrances, the larger buildings, so that the food delivery, the Uber-type drivers can have a place to pull in, stay out of the way of the rest of the traffic in the facility, not that there's going to be a lot, and then be on their way once they've either delivered their packages or gotten their ride-share customers. Number two speaks to demonstrating to the board how many parking spaces are provided. 283 parking spaces are proposed. It's a little less of the zoning bylaw requirement of 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit plus adequate parking for visitors and employees. Later on, I'll talk about the waiver request, but for now, I recognize that the six, there's six, six or eight buildings at the lower level, the two-story six, six or eight buildings at the lower level, the two-story buildings are anticipated or proposed to have underground parking. There was nothing in the civil documents that I could look at and look at the configuration or count up the number of parking spaces, but that is the extent of what number two speaks about. I want to make sure it's very clear to myself, your transportation reviewer, and the board that what's being proposed in the way of parking. Because again, part of what I've got to do, I review for the local regulations pertaining to land development, zoning bylaw, the stormwater regulations, and the wetland regulations and so forth. But my point is, I look at not only compliance with the regulations, general engineering from a civil perspective, civil engineering, and allocation of space. Quite frankly, allocation of space is very important. Is there enough parking? Is there enough pedestrian? Is there enough snow storage and so on and so forth? And if there isn't, what I first look at is, is there ability to use some other space if necessary? And if not, I raise the red flag and we have a chat about it. So that's got to do with parking, parking and a little concern about allocation of space. Because moving on to number 10, a waiver has been requested from the parking for less than 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit, and that doesn't account visitors nor does it account employees. Now, my understanding is that the highest parking demands will be later in the evening when there's probably less visitors and certainly very little staff, unless there's any overnight staff. But needless to say, a waiver was requested, no justification was provided, and I called the board's attention to that. In other communities, I've got a municipal client, I've dealt with them with the number 40B reviews, they have a higher, the 1.5 parking space to dwelling unit ratio. And in my research with the Institute of Traffic Engineers, parking generation manual, the average for these types of building runs roughly in the 1.6, 1.65, and then the 85th percentile might get up near around 1.7. I loaned my ITE manual to a municipal, small municipal client who had to do some research, so I couldn't put the numbers in writing on the letter I issued Thursday, but I'll be better prepared next time around. But again, back to allocation of space. I don't see the ability to add the eight spaces for which they're requesting a waiver plus whatever parking is needed for visitors and employees. So it's, I think there'll be more discussion about this. I'll just summarize number two and number eight. Yes, I recognize there are, there is parking proposed on the lower levels, but I am concerned whether there'll be enough parking, onsite parking without starting parking shoulders and things like that. Moving on to number 12, in reviewing the hydrology, I review the pre-development conditions, look at the analysis point, make point or points, make sure I'm in agreement. Look at the overall methodology in general, then look at the methodology and the input data used in the pre-development conditions to model what was there. And then I do the same in the post-development conditions, which usually includes impoundments and so forth. Quite frankly, very much in order. But one of the things that was a little concerning to me in the post-development conditions is the rear buildings, the ones when you're looking at the plans to the very right, the lowest level, the back of the buildings are much lower than the front of the buildings where the underground stormwater systems would be for those buildings. So what it comes down to is it can be piped across the side of the building to make it work, not all the way down into the ground because then they'd have to pump, and you just don't pump stormwater. So I want the board to be fully aware of this so that as these plans get a little more refined to address comments, this is an aesthetic issue, I realize, but I want to make sure stormwater management takes precedence over aesthetics as far as whether or not pipes are there on the side of the building, unless they come up with another method. Moving on to number 15, this is again with respect to stormwater management, there was quite a bit of soil testing done years ago. I did review the previous development on behalf of the zoning board of appeals when that came through a few years ago. I visited the site then. I visited the site this time around as well, but I do, do feel that it's going to be prudent to do some soil testing at the storm, underground stormwater management systems. I fully expect they're not going to have a problem with it. It's not the greatest soils, they get a lot of fill, but because of the topography, there is some cut condition at the underground systems on the higher levels of the existing ground and fill conditions on the lower levels, so I want to make sure they have suitable soils and offset the groundwater. Moving on to number 19, a retaining wall is proposed along South Street. The plans also show the concept of a sidewalk. I fully encourage the sidewalk, fully encourage it. It's scary to take a walk down there, even when you get your high-visibility clothing on and you're keeping an eye out. But nevertheless, that's, that's a big benefit to the town as well as to the project. Project's going to bring on some people that like to walk, so that whole block between Route 20 and Route Nine, up by the automobile dealerships and so forth, makes a nice place to walk, so the whole, the whole large block, if you will, up Chestnut and down South Street in one direction or the other, in my opinion, should be, should be made pedestrian-friendly. But with respect to the sidewalk along South Street on the project property, the retaining wall is proposed near the sidewalk. The base of the wall is proposed a few, couple, two, two and a half feet above the sidewalk. I look at that and I get a little bit concerned, future, future work on the sidewalk, future work on utilities in the shoulder of a road under the sidewalk is, which is common. That type of work taking place at the base of a large retaining wall is concerning to me. So if the base of the wall was set a little bit deeper, it's less impactful to future work along this corridor, especially with respect to, again, future maintenance or future repairs or future utility work in the shoulder of the road. But the concept overall is good. Not that I want to compare this project to the last project, I know it was a different developer, but the last project had that retaining wall sitting much, much higher than just a couple of feet to begin with. But I think getting it a couple of feet below the sidewalk is very prudent. And lastly, number 21, this respects, speaks to the, what the board would be looking at at the northeast corner and southeast corner, I believe. There's some grading that's proposed at 1.5 to 1 and 1 to 1. The concept, I don't have a problem with, but I'm not a geotechnical engineer. The concern becomes slope stability. This is not erosion stability. It's not the surface runoff or the runoff of the surface soil particles from rainfall or moving water. This is from the global potential for the slope to fail. 2 to 1, I never have a problem with. Generally speaking, the soils, whether they're well-sorted sands which can't take such a steep angle, or the more, or the glacial tills which can, can stand at a steeper angle at 2 to 1 or less, or less steep, they're generally not a problem. But once it gets steep in 2 to 1, those should be looked at by a geotechnical engineer. This is similar to like retaining wall design. Retaining wall design, you'll see the concept on the planes you have in front of you, but the retaining walls haven't actually been designed yet, nor would they, I expect them to be, until they choose the wall designer to design a wall for their specific product. Likewise, I'd expect that the slope stability be evaluated before going to construction to make sure the materials used as well as the surface treatment are something that can hold up to the 1.5 to 1 or even steeper 1 to 1 slopes. So that's something that would be addressed more so in the condition, not during this comprehensive permit review process, but it's still important in my eyes. Madam Chairman, members of the board, those are the highlights I wanted to bring to your attention and discuss. I'm able to give you verbally a lot more, oh, by the ways and so forth than the letter would allow, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'll talk further if anybody had questions about other parts of my review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Nothing from me, ma'am.
Okay, for now. You're good? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. By the way, I might point out with respect to that parking ratio of 1.5 to 1, I did get a copy of the development agreement after I issued my letter, and it's called out in there, 1.5 to 1 and a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Do you want traffic? Traffic is also available. Bowman?
Please.
Good evening. Maureen LaPatan from Bowman Consulting. We had completed the traffic peer review for this project, and I'll similarly kind of go through some of our high-level comments that we think warrant some more discussion. We too had flagged the parking. More specifically, our comments relate to the land use code that was used for both the trip generation and for the parking generation for the site. The traffic impact study had utilized a mid-rise housing-type unit, which is typically four stories or higher. I think the plan for this site seems to be that it's three stories or less for all of those different units, which aligns more with the low-rise land use code in Institute Transportation Engineers. And depending on, you know, the code used, the low-rise would result in potentially slightly higher trip generation and parking generation. So we wanted to take another look at that just to make sure all the trips are accounted for and that the appropriate amount of parking is provided onsite. And we had also similarly flagged that there's no land-banked parking proposed, and if there are areas for additional parking, should they need that. There is also the transportation demand management strategy of the unbundled parking, and that may result in a lower parking demand for having people have to pay separately for parking, but not enough backup, I guess, for us to kind of go through and see how that impacts the actual amount of parking that's proposed on the site. So we asked for some additional information relating to that. Next comment would be about the intersection site distance and stopping site distances primarily at the Chestnut Street, at South Street intersection, but also at the intersection site distance for the proposed site driveway, looking down to South Street. So there's different speeds that you can utilize to estimate the intersection site distance, the stopping site distance. There's posted speed limit, there's the 85th percentile speed limit, which is typically higher than the posted speed limit. And then when you have intersections that are closely spaced to another intersection, you can generally use a lower speed for a turning vehicle, so a 15 mile an hour. Turning speed was used for some of the movements. We would ask to clarify just because the information didn't seem to be in the table that the posted and the 85th percentile speeds are included because the distance seemed to be just close enough to kind of meet and indicating that someone maybe could get up past the 15 mile an hour speed and that more site distance might be necessary. With respect to the realignment of Chestnut Street at South Street, given the site distances and the tricky grading, we did ask if there could be the potential need for additional safety measures such as an all-way stop control and what impacts that might have on South Street. Looking quickly on our end, I don't think that an all-way stop control is necessarily warranted based on traffic volumes. There's a couple of different warrants in the manual uniform traffic control devices that you can use to see if a all-way stop control is warranted, one of those being sightline issues. So asked for more clarification around that, as well as the impacts to the adjacent property owner, which it seems like you have coordination with them ongoing, but we did ask, you know, preliminarily if they expect, you know, significant retaining walls or work outside of the town right of way just because of the amount of regrading that's happening on Chestnut Street that is proposed to drop by several feet in many spots. For the trip routing, trip distribution, we didn't have any comments with that. We didn't have any comments about the background growth rate or the other site developments that were included. We did coordinate with adjacent towns and didn't find any other planned development projects that should be accounted for, so we were in agreement with those. We did field review the intersections, reviewed signal timings, lane configurations, things like that. Have a couple, you know, comments about what was included in the report, just to verify that those are the latest used in the analysis. And then depending on taking another look at the land use code for the trips to the site, just making sure that the findings and recommendations in the report wouldn't be changed significantly by using a slightly higher trip generation rate. And I would note that it was, the intersection of Route 20 was specifically analyzed without the Mass DOT project in place, as kind of a more conservative approach, should that project, you know, take longer. And those results show that there's adequate capacity even without the Mass DOT project, just given the estimated impact. So again, we'll take another look at capacity analysis just to ensure that everything is still the same expected outcome, but didn't have any major comments on capacity. Again, some things with like lane uses, no turn-on-red restrictions, things like that, on how the intersections were modeled, that might change results slightly. I believe that's it for our higher-level comments that I wanted to go over. Any questions?
Any questions, comments from the board?
Not right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything? Other commentary? Yes. Okay. All right, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter, sir?
David Singer, 400 South Street. First, I'd like to just say as far as the development itself, I want to thank Chris and his crew. They've been very communicative, redesigning and changing the colors, not just with, in the lighting, not with just dark, dark sky lighting, but also reflective lighting to keep any seepage coming from us like we get from that horribly white warehouse building that is under, is well-overlit as well. So I really appreciate the efforts and have no problems with really anything, the development. I would like to see, if possible, maybe some more shrubbery put on the corner where we're talking about the retaining walls with Chestnut Street and South Street to mitigate, well, both our sightline into residential apartments and be their sightline into our living rooms would be probably appreciated by both. So that would just kind of be the only thing, all the other technical stuff. I would be concerned, I was encouraged to hear that all the drainage is to stay onsite because the first proposal was to have it come out and was a major, major issue. So as long as drainage keeps, continue to be talked about and continues to stay onsite, that's great. I realize, you know, that's going to be worked through. Most of my issues come early with traffic. I agree, I don't see this particular project as a major impact site as far as delaying the intersection. What does change periodically is if you have two 18-wheelers coming from Route Nine to Route 20 and that backs it up, that can be a potential to start, as cars start to exit out of Chestnut Street to go take a left onto to South Street. It's dramatically different. It's short-lived, it's about a half hour in the morning, but when the Indian School on South Street goes into session, South Street backs up from Route 20 past my house and pretty much I think all you know where that is with all the rocks. So already you have, for a short time in the morning at the high-impact travel, you already have a backup backing up past Chestnut Street. And it's going to make it very difficult at the high level, at a high-traffic time for cars to turn, you know, left and something just to be aware of. Something I mentioned before that would be encouraging to put signage onto the site for any cars leaving the site. If they're going to be traveling Route Nine east or Route 20 east, say to Wegmans and beyond, to take Chestnut Street out to Route Nine east and use that as access instead of taking a left and a left and trying to, you know, go down that way, and that might help mitigate it as well. The biggest issue I have is with sidewalks. The west side of South Street is our front yard. It's a very, very short front yard. As it is right now, when I have to go get my mail, I make sure there's no traffic coming by. When I mow my front lawn, I'm always looking over my shoulder. Cars come flying down that road. It's a much safer place on the east side, but either way, whether you're going to cross it here, which comes right off the curb, which is extremely dangerous, or cross it here, which comes up from a heavy slope from Route 20, I can tell you, this is not a safe area for walkers. There's a couple of... couple of automotive people that work at the McCormick's or wherever they are down there and they walk it and it's very dangerous. And when they're there, the amount of beeps that you hear from cars, it's just not a very safe to have a, have people walking all the time. There's, there's walkways within the property that, that lead out from Chestnut Street to South Street towards the dealership side of things. And a lot of people I know from the development use that. A lot of the people from the development at the corner of South Street and Route 9 use the sidewalk and as they hit here, they simply turn back around where they'll, you know, they'll go. There's no way you can put a sidewalk on the west side of that roadway. It's extremely dangerous. As you all know, there's already rocks that line my property there. There's a reason why, because cars are constantly hitting them. And you're just setting yourself up so that really needs to be, be readdressed. When it comes to the intersection of Chestnut and South Street, I've lived there 33 years, so I've got a 33-year study on the road and it's ongoing. A lot of the traffic problems come, I'm not really sure how the grade is going to change things, but the biggest problem is the sightline coming off of Chestnut and cars coming up from Route 20. Almost every single car has to jut out onto South Street. My corner home office, I can't tell the amount of times I hear cars beeping, also coming from the other corner. I'm not sure how you can make this a safe intersection or make it safer, it's dangerous as it is. I can tell you that as a, an emergency route, South Street between Route 9 and Route 20 is well-plowed. You get issues when you get down to Route 20 with a wad of gathers in winter, becomes an ice sheet. You'll have issues in winter, when cars are coming down Chestnut Street because of the slope, but the, a lot of the issue is, as cars are going up Chestnut in the winter from South Street, whether it's from the Route 20 or the Route 9 side, in the middle of a storm before it gets plowed, a lot of cars get stuck going up Chestnut Street. So, that also will need to be addressed with fire trucks, with buses, you know, with, with things like that as we go along. And again, I mean, the amount of speed, the size of the trucks that come off of this curve is frightening on every vehicle trip and it's definitely not a safe place to put pedestrians. I think that kind of, you know, does it for now. This property also, this changes the zoning, correct? This will change it from current zoning to residential?
So, no, it does not change the zoning. The 40B process supersedes zoning, essentially.
And does that change the buffering, even though it's not changed to a residential zoning? There's residential there. Does that change the buffering for any kind of future, you know, developments?
It modifies the buffering requirements. So, they would still provide them, but it's not defined.
Isn't it 3A zoning too?
Correct. So, yeah, so this is 3A zoning as well, which would allow for residential development. So, the TOD overlay zone.
The last thing, just to make one point on that we'll make, as Falcon Farm goes up, Emerald Brown, as the, as everything continues to build, one way to make that Route 9, uh, Route 20, South Street intersection safer right away, I don't know how this gets done, through the state, through the town, is to make the Green Street side have its own light cycle and the South Street side have its own light cycle. And that will alleviate traffic that's trying to turn left off of South Street or left off of Green Street. Nobody's really sure how that right-of-way works anymore. So, there's a lot of accidents and, you know, I can tell you where I live, on a daily basis, whether it's coming from town or Cherry Street, there's sirens, you know, all the time. So, the whole area, you know, just remains difficult and dangerous. And I think that's all I have for time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to be heard? Okay. Any other comments?
On this evening. So, again, the peer review is ongoing. As mentioned, we'll have a letter on the waivers and recommendations related to that for the next meeting and hopefully have some more information as well for that.
Are the peer reviews on the portal now? Have we?
Uh, they should be. If, if not, I'll make sure that they're uploaded.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we need to continue to the seventh?
Vote to continue. Yes, sorry, sorry. Can I get a motion to continue to our next meeting, which will be November 24th?
I make a motion to continue this matter until November, November 24th.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't move. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take just a three to five-minute break. All right, next. All right. This next hearing is a continued hearing from our September 29th, 2025 meeting. It's to hear the appeal of the 104 Main Street, the Quinn LLC comprehensive permit to Mass General Law 40B, Section 20 to 23, to permit the construction of a 300-unit multifamily residential development. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Mark Donahue on behalf of the applicant, Quinn LLC. With me is the team that you have met before. We have submitted a fair amount of information to you since the last time we met. If the board believes it would be beneficial, we can review some of that information so that you're up to speed as to it and, and where it came from. And that culminates with, to some extent, a letter that we submitted as far as the status after a working session we had with town's staff with regard to the waivers, that we'd like to try to move some discussion forward. One of the changes that we did advise by a submittal through the portal was some revisions to the building itself, which changes modestly the mix of units and the number of bedrooms. And so, with your permission, I'm going to have Mr. Clay Smook explain to you what it's all about and certainly answer any questions you have with regard to that.
Sure, thank you. Clay Smook, Smook Architecture. My office is in Westboro. I've addressed the board before. As we were saying, there's just some minor changes to the plan. If you could pull those, if you could pull the plan up?
Yep.
Thank you. Pardon the delay. Well, I'll begin as, as tries to find the plan. The configuration, the configuration of the building is largely the same. What we found is, because of the great views of Lake Quinsigamond, that we wanted to move some of the amenity package from the ground floor up to the fifth floor. So, there's obviously elevator access to that. It's in the center, if you can see on the center finger, we now, instead of, we had, I think, before about 11,000 square feet of amenities at the base level. What we've done is we've taken a share of that and moved it up to the fifth level. The unit mix has changed slightly in that we have two less, two less two bedrooms and two more one bedrooms. The count still stays the same at 300 apartments, but what we've done is on the, by taking some of this, of the ground-level amenities and pulling up to floor five, if you have that slide, the upper level, we've sort of created a sky lounge that has long views of Lake Quinsigamond. There's a sky lounge, there's some roof deck amenities up there, as well as we're calling sort of a sky, the sky lounge, sky bar area over there. So, the physical configuration of the building is basically the same. It's really just moving some of the, some of the uses from floor one to floor five. I believe that was submitted in the package. It's in the portal. So, if we can't pull it up now, certainly take a look at that.
Sorry, it's not loaded at the moment. I'll keep trying to pull that up.
Okay. As soon as that comes up, we can show it. Again, the mix, the, the change in the mix is de minimis. Again, moving, bringing down to, from 78 to 76 two bedrooms and, and bringing up from 73, uh, 173 to 175 one bedrooms. The mix now is 19 studios at 6.3%, 58.3 one bedrooms, 25.4 two bedrooms, and of course, a 10% three bedrooms. And again, about two-thirds of the square footage of the amenities at the ground floor, including clubhouse, fitness and bike storage at the lowest level. And then, again, the sky bar and some roof deck area, level five. I think that summarizes the changes. Pardon the technical error. That's the ground level.
Just making a note that we don't have this accessible to us.
There it is.
It was submitted to the portal.
I'm just saying.
Here it is. Here it is at the top level, shown. This is the upper level. We have some images from a similar project we, we've done before. Again, the views are going to be amazing, long views of the, of the lake, unobstructed views. Thank you.
Mr. Smook's here. I don't know if there's any other questions or concerns the board has with regard to the design of the building. If not, then certainly can let him leave if he so desires.
Yeah, I think it's hard to comment. We don't, we don't have the information in front of us. So, this is all news to us. But I, anybody, comments, questions?
I don't have any at this time, ma'am.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the, would the board, going forward, prefer a separate submittal beyond putting the information into the town portal or?
Should be fine in the portal. When were those uploaded? I'm not seeing them.
Well, if that's, we'll, we'll straighten it out. If it's not up for some reason, we'll fix it and apologize for that.
The only additional submitted plans were the floor plans, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
In addition, there were submittals, the board had questions at the last meeting relative to an amenity for school-aged children and also some questions with regard to compliance with the efforts for fire access. Revisions have been made and with your permission, I'll have Mr. Cordero review those, at least at a summary level with you. Phil?
Snow room at the end. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates, presenting for the applicant. As Mr. Donahue mentioned, since our last meeting, we endeavored to provide the board with continually evolving and updated information, the first of which was providing a site plan that depicted the inclusion of a bus shelter along North Quinsigamond directly related to the front door amenity and the sidewalk crossing that had been previously presented to the board, with the notion that children, students, adults, if they're waiting for the area transit, would have a, a place of shelter and refuge from the weather elements out along the roadway edge, since we note that school buses would, would not enter the property. I know that those were definitely uploaded to the portal. Hopefully, you can see those. Okay, very good. The other change that we've, we've made is we've provided and uploaded additional landscaping-based information. And this is as a direct result of our conversation with the, the town after our last meeting with the board. The board may recall that there's a sliver of land on the southerly portion of our site that is sandwiched between our property of interest and Quinsigamond Ave that is owned by the town of Shoesbury Water Department. It's sort of a remnant from the old lands that were bifurcated by the construction of Route 20 and the Mass DOT layout, excuse me, 290 and, and the Mass DOT layout. So, it's a sliver of land. We have been working with the town for the opportunity to improve that land, simply for the addition of landscaping. So, there is an existing gravel driveway that crosses it now, that provides access to the storage yard that's on the property. We're asking for permission to remove that driveway and add landscaping contiguous with the landscaping for the project. So, we'll read as one uniform project. The applicant would be responsible for the maintenance of that landscaping, replacement, trimming, et cetera, with the permission and the appropriate rights granted by the town to do so. We are not acquiring the land. It would remain in perpetuity to the town of Shoesbury Water Department. We felt it could be an improvement to the overall aesthetic of that corridor and that would be located along the backside of the sidewalk improvements along Quinsigamond that are provided as part of this project. The other element, again, relative to landscaping, is along the frontage of the site proper. We have increased the density of the shrubbery and the tree buffer sandwiched between the back of the sidewalk and the development as a further attempt to really reduce headlight glare nuisance, wayward light glare from the residents that are but Lake Quinsigamond across the street from us. Now, we do note that the residences across the street from us, they, they do exist at a lower grade. So, previous hearings with this board, we noted that the headlight and light provided from from this development may not impact those, those residents as much, given that they have the additional benefit of grade as they drop down towards the lake. However, we did go ahead and further densify that landscaping to really reinforce and ensure that that is the case, and we've done all that we can do to make sure that those residences, residents are not impacted by, you know, nuisance and wayward light glare through that corridor. As Mr. Calhoun noted, we do continue to work with the fire department. We have not received any new or additional comments from them. I know the board had expressed some concerns at the last meeting. The fire department had made note that they did not want mountable curb to be used on this site, so we did update the site plans to remove that mountable curb. So wherever there is an area of the site that would be accessed by the fire department, those areas would be flush mound pavement, so there is no impediment for any of the vehicles to access those areas. I know initially the fire department had concern that going over the mountable curb would somehow force them to maybe maneuver more widely into the drive aisles to avoid the mountable curb, but we have removed those impediments. They can access the site without crossing over the imaginary center line of the drive aisles for the parking areas and drive aisles that circumnavigate to the garage, and they can have full and unfettered access through the site. We have not received any additional commentary from the fire department, either positive or negative against that change, but we did make that hearing, the direct feedback from the fire department. The same also remains true. We do have, again, the fire access gate that limits pedestrian vehicles and unauthorized vehicles, I guess, from accessing the porous asphalt driveway that circumnavigates about half of the building. We do have that gate in place. Whatever the final decision is relative to the fire department in terms of what they want that gate to be is what the gate will be. But I do note for the board that we do continue to show the standard bar gate, if you will, which is just tubular steel. It is a locked gate that only the fire department would have access to. They would remove the lock, the gate swings open, and they have full and complete access around the rear of the building. Should the fire department decide they want something different, whether it be a crash barrier or some other form of restricted access gate, we remain committed to providing that at the direction of the fire department. So that's it from the site planning side in terms of changes. As of late today, we did receive the updated review letter from Graves Engineering, who's still here in the audience, so if the board wishes to hear from Mr. Walsh again, I'm sure he'll be happy to speak on his comments. But my takeaway is that at this point, we've satisfied the technical comments that he had raised, and we have been working with him on resolving, so we have a technically proficient application in terms of circulation, management, parking, access around the buildings, signage, sight lighting, stormwater management, and other detailing that went into it. But obviously, if you would like Mr. Walsh to say that, I'll allow him to do that.
Just a quick question. Do you mind showing them the bus shelter that was submitted? Jack, can you flip that slide?
Happily, if you want to change the slide. It's, it's no problem. The bus shelter is directly related to the location of our amenity. It is located, you want to pan down a little bit? It's actually over here. There we go. It is directly located adjacent to a sidewalk that we will be providing through marked crosswalk. And that, that bus shelter is a canopy, but it's open on all sides for safety, visibility, et cetera, so we don't have any security matters in terms of having anybody take refuge from the weather underneath that shelter. So it is an open roof canopy. We did provide the detail of which on the detailed drawings. If you want to bring them up, we can share that with the board, but those should also be in the portal for your review as well. Just take one quick look at it. Do you have it?
I'm not sure if there's a 3B.
I apologize.
Go ahead and slide down.
Apart from the notice, so again, just noting, so it is a columnar in its appearance. Obviously, I'll ask Mr. Smook to weigh in if he would like, just a simple roof covering to make sure everybody is safe from the weather, but is not shielded from visibility for security and safety purposes. And I'm happy to address any comments or updates or changes that we've made if the board had any questions relative to any of those.
Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wish to hear from Mr. Walsh now while we're on civil, or?
Board? Any comments on whether you want to hear from your review?
I say why not?
Yeah, sure.
Good evening again, everyone. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering, peer reviewer for the Zoning Board of Appeals on general civil and stormwater.
Could you speak up, sir?
Sorry about that. Again, Jeff Walsh, Graves Engineering, peer reviewer for the Zoning Board of Appeals on behalf of the issues of general engineering, zoning bylaw, compliance, local regulations, compliance, and stormwater management. We issued a follow-up review letter just today. Sorry, I couldn't get it out to you last week. But nevertheless, I didn't have many major comments to begin with. The major comments have been addressed. There's a couple minor things that I would, I speak to in here about if the comprehensive, if a comprehensive permit is issued and construction plans would certainly be prepared before the, before the project goes to construction. Those plans, there's a couple of detail-oriented comments in here that those details should end up on the construction plans. For example, oh, I forget exactly what I had in here, because I don't usually markup those things, but, for example, number 15, some spot elevations in parking areas, just to make sure a contractor understands to, at the corners of the parking lot, pitch everything toward the, toward catch bases. It's that level of detail, something, something that would not, the board would not be interested in at the level of issuing a comprehensive permit. But I do want to, I do want to bring to the board's attention comment number 16, I'm sorry, 17, on page four. 17 on page four speaks to allocation of space, snow storage. And the plans were revised to show snow storage areas. There's a large area on the Main Street side of the project over by the dumpster and reserve parking area that would accommodate some snow storage. And, and there's also a strip of snow storage proposed just off the parking areas on the North Quinzigman Avenue side. Quite frankly, that's a landscaping area along North Quinzigman Avenue, and snow's not going to go there because the landscaping's going to get damaged. So again, I look at, okay, where's space? And quite frankly, I see that temporarily parking would be used to store snow until snow was hauled off-site. They are proposing a number of parking spaces that complies with the zoning bylaw, greater than one and a half spaces, plus additional parking for employees and visitors. So personally, I don't have a problem with it, this concept, but I do want the board to know that that's how I read the intention with snow storage. Thinking back to my days of plowing snow, you push it where you can without damaging things, and when you can't push it anymore, you stack it up in corners in the least-used parking areas, and then if your client so wants to haul it away, you haul it away. And obviously, with a project like this, hauling snow is going to be very important to them to manage their site. But again, I wanted the board to understand that that's, that's my read on the snow storage. I have nothing else that...
Questions, comments, any board members?
Not me, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also received today a further review letter from Bowman on the traffic. We candidly have not had a chance to digest that yet. This, the patent's here, you may want to hear from Herb in summary as to what her findings are, but we're really not in a position to discuss the substance. We can do that at the next meeting.
Do we want to wait or proceed forward with her being here? Proceed forward?
Yes. You don't mind? Thank you.
Good evening again. Maureen LePeyton with Bowman Consulting. Again, we did just send the letter over earlier this morning. There was a bit of overlap with when our letter is dated and a recent updated letter that we received with some cost information, so we have similarly not had a chance to digest all of that, but we'll review that and provide some additional comment. Our previous comments, we had a couple different kind of main themes, but going back to the traffic volumes that were utilized in the analysis, the applicant did revise, the volumes had looked into a couple of other background elements in the area, had included those in the traffic volumes used in the analysis, so we are in agreement with the volume set that was used for the purpose of the analysis. Had a couple little minor comments on some of the timings used in the analysis still. I don't think it will significantly change what they're reporting, but flagged those. Remaining four topics, I would say, was we had requested backup, additional backup for the sidewalk cost estimate. There was just a footnote at the bottom of the response to comment letter provided, so we just wanted a little more information on that and to make sure that it included all of the necessary items of work that would be needed for sidewalk construction, grading and prepping, you know, underneath where the sidewalk would eventually go. On the analysis front, now that we had the updated volume sets, we looked a little bit deeper into the actual analysis and the outputs of the analysis. We had previously just checked lane configurations and things like that that we could check without kind of diving in too deeply, knowing that some of the volumes might change and that the outputs for the analysis might change. So with that, we had additional comments on the I-290 eastbound ramp specifically at Main Street, just that it didn't seem like it was producing logical results for the existing conditions. We know, we acknowledge that there's some delay issues out there during the peak hours, but it's saying that there's 9,000 seconds of delay on the ramp, which that's over two hours of delay. So it's not operating like that, or obviously is some delay. And then in the future conditions, it was so long that it wasn't even giving an output. So we didn't really have enough information with how the result was shown, how the intersection may have been modeled. There might be some tweaks that could be made to change that to be more in line with what the existing conditions actually are, existing delays that are experienced, so we weren't able to fully assess what the impact from the project specifically might be on that location, understanding, you know, that there is some added traffic there. There's some existing issues, so wanted to call attention to that. We had also, in our prior comment letter, asked for a sensitivity analysis for the North Quinzigman intersection at Holden Street and Main Street with and without the 142 Clinton Street project, just to see what those impacts would be based on this proposed project and the different mitigation treatments that might be needed if the 142 Clinton Street project is not moving forward or is not on the same timeline where they would be doing their mitigation, what mitigation might be appropriate from this project specifically. There was some discussion in the response to comments that if 142 Clinton Street did not proceed, that it's possible that timing and phasing changes may only be needed, but there was not additional backup that we could review to verify what that might entail specifically. So asked for a little bit more information on that. Also, with the inclusion of sidewalk connection along North Quinzigman, we took another look at the pedestrian volumes utilized in the analysis, particularly at the North Quinzigman intersection, and just asked generally, could increased pedestrian and bike traffic impact the analysis results? The traffic volumes that were used for pedestrians in the analysis were based on existing counts with, which don't show a high number of pedestrians pressing the push buttons at the signal. It is an exclusive pedestrian phase, so if there is a potential increase in that traffic from the, the Complete Streets project, would that have a significant adverse effect to the reported results in their analysis? Just wanted confirmation on that. And general, the last two comments may partially be answered by the additional information we got, but we haven't had a chance to fully look over it, just timeline and clarity on the improvements and the roles and responsibilities of those improvements. And then, is that it? I think that might be it, actually. So yeah, timeline and roles and responsibilities on, on all of the mitigation, which we can look over the supplemental memo that was received on Friday.
Thank you. Any questions?
Last I remember, did I read a drive in an old mill? We were talking about making I-Reda turn right only. Has there been any more development up at that end, or are we just leaving the status quo there?
I can answer through check.
Last I heard, we had a force I-Reda turn right. There'd be no more left-hand turns on to Main from I-Reda. And is that, is that your position still? You're done?
No, to the chair. That was part of the analysis as to how an intersection that we were asked to investigate could be improved. That was reviewed by Mr. Durk with you. The consensus from this board seemed to be that would be creating an undue burden in some fashion upon residents there. Therefore, his report concluded there really wasn't any other solution right there for that, and so it remains an existing condition, but not significantly impacted by this proposed development.
Just, yes, to speak more on that, the 142 Clinton Street project is proposing some timing modifications and optimizations there, again, similar to the North Quinzigman intersection. Should something happen to that project and it not move forward, the response to comments did state that those timing changes would be performed by this project. But yeah, generally, the prohibiting of left turns out of I-Reda Road is not proposed as a mitigation.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
And then I think the final piece that we submitted was a correspondence that I submitted that summarized a working session we had with Mr. McGoldrick and other town officials reviewing the, the response memo of the planning department to the request for waivers. And that correspondence outlines a couple of pieces of information that we owe you based upon that, and also indicates some areas in which we're looking for any direction from either the planning department or this board if some additional information is required in order to try to get you what you need for those particular items. Beyond that, the correspondence refers to the matters with regard to potential waivers of certain fees that are generally charged to residential developments in the town. Our request had been for a complete waiver of those, and the correspondence outlines what we propose to be the means and methods for that type of compromise. And I don't know if Mr. McGoldrick wants to speak more to it. I don't want to certainly misrepresent what the discussion we had, so.
Yes, I mean, in relation to that and the fee waivers, I just, I don't believe that they're, I wouldn't characterize them as generally given to projects within the community. It's typically done as part of a cost analysis for a project and economic development opportunities. So, you know, those are weighed against public benefits. So I think from our conversation, we had talked about having those community benefits kind of more memorialized, more substantively developed in order for the board to be able to consider those in relation to any of the waiver requests that are... in relation to any of the waiver requests that are being subjected. Certainly in relation to waivers from any, you know, water connection fees and any of the utility connection fees, although the board does have the authority to grant them under 40B, we would recommend that that be more done in coordination with the boards and committees that typically oversee that, again, following that process of evaluation. That's typically done with projects. That conversation today has not yet happened, so would caution the board considering those at this time. Actually, I have to go get a charger, my computer has had enough and has died, so I...
Can I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. Would I still troubled with the sewage connection? We're admitting that the pump station is under consent decree, and we can't put any more flow into that pump station until two downstream pump stations are modified and improved. Who holds the ball for those downstream pump stations? The town? Or is that... Who owns them, us, they ours?
I haven't looked into this issue, but I'm going to presume, yes, if they're part of the sewer system, that it's owned by the town.
Yeah, I mean, what we're saying then is to make this work, town's going to have to spend money to improve pumping stations. Otherwise, we can't connect.
If you're under a consent decree, you've got to spend the money to improve them irrespective of this project.
But are they under consent decree, or just the one at...
I don't know which stations are under a consent decree and which are impacted. What I do know is if there is a consent decree, it's between the town and the DEP. And it's something that the town will have to do irrespective of whether or not this project moves forward.
Well, that's a question I, and the timeline for that determines... I mean, what I'm afraid of is I don't want Shrewsbury holding the bag to delay a project perhaps because we can't get those pump stations fixed in enough time. If they're ready and we're not, what happens? Who holds no occupancy permit and that's it?
Correct, I mean...
Okay, you guys are aware of that, right? I mean, we're not going to be holding the bag for you if you want to hook up and we're not ready.
The issue of the administrative consent order with regard to the pump station has been a longstanding issue between the town and the Department of Environmental Protection. I think we talked about a little bit before, and I don't want to get too far in the night, so I'll leave it to Mr. McGoldrick. But I think that the means and method of the solution has now been at least agreed to, at least in concept, between DEP and the town, and the town is moving forward toward all the steps necessary for implementation of that, but I'll leave it to Mr. McGoldrick who might have...
Chris, I waited till you left the room, of course.
Technical question.
If I heard, it's the pump station, and the question, I think it was raised previously about the the pump station and the timing in relation to this project. So yeah, so the town has entered into a revised administrative consent order and is conducting work in relation to the pump station to develop that. So the town is required to do that work by DEP regardless of this...
Timeline for that, Chris?
It should align with this project as our current understanding is, but...
Thank you.
But no guarantee, obviously. Should align.
That bothers me, I guess.
So, if I can just follow up on Mr. McGoldrick's comments. You know, our correspondence outlined what we see as the community benefits of this project, and proposes a component of that to deal with traffic consideration, but that is, to some extent, hinged upon the board's determination on waivers. So I'm a little confused as to what's the proposed process if somehow this board's going to look for some guidance with regard to that to do it within the timeline that's afforded for this application.
So I think in relation to the waivers, I think, you know, the board can consider the waivers as provided. We have the staff recommendation that's been provided for each of those waivers. You know, in terms of the community benefit, again, I think to clarify on my comment on that, that's in relation to if we were reviewing additional fee waivers and things like that, which again, don't recommend doing. At this stage, the board can consider the recommendations in relation to the community benefits that have been suggested to date. Some of those are still, you know, from our conversations, some of those still remain open-ended and somewhat vague, there's not a lot of firmness to the the community benefits that have been identified. So I think there's still some information to be developed and conversation to be had around those at this stage. Happy to have the board be a part of that conversation as needed, so...
Sure, and we're open to that. I just, you know, we see it within the ability of the board to issue these waivers. We're proposing what would be an additional condition of approval, perhaps subject to further fleshing out of what that means and timing and those other issues based upon that. But that's a process that we see is to be dealt with with this board. Certainly, if the board wants to involve other boards, that's their prerogative. But it is, it's a critical component of trying to get to a decision that everybody can live with. And I, if there needs to be further discussion, particularly with the board, then we need to start it because we're kind of getting toward the end of this process. That's what we're hoping, that the letter might at least start that discussion.
The community benefit letter?
Can I point to the board's attention? If you go to page three, the letter that was submitted, you'll see that Mark goes through and identifies community benefits that we are providing to the town in addition to, obviously, the critical item of much-needed housing. In addition to that, we're doing a complete reconstruction as requested by the town of all the sidewalks along the front of our project. In addition to that, we were asked to do a cash contribution towards your, you know, your Complete Streets program, which we put together a quick estimate as to what that would look like. And we put a 20% contingency on that, and that came up to roughly $42,000. On top of that, we have committed to revitalizing Gouge Park up to a maximum of $175,000. We have submitted a plan with some various concepts on the benches and what we look to do there. And actually, there was a rather positive article in the local paper in the past couple weeks, which is a big part for us to do. We're also going to be taking care of the ongoing maintenance of the park. We're also, as the board requested, we added a bus shelter, and also we're going to incorporate into our management program a way so that the kids can actually wait inside if we do have children in the building. The other thing that comes into play that is a tremendous community benefit is the affordable housing. You do get full credit for 300 units, which is a big contribution to your state goals. On top of that, the project will yield probably tax revenue in the order of magnitude of $900,000 a year, which is a great boost in a time when taxes are vital to the performance. So when you go down the list, and if the board could take the time and spend a few minutes reading through it, you'll see we're making a tremendous contribution to the town. And obviously, housing is probably one of your number one goals in the town. So I think we're doing everything that smart development looks to achieve, and we're doing a high-quality project, which is what everybody wants. And one of the things that started in the very, very early part of this process was reducing the size of our units and our unit mix, which we did from the very beginning, incorporating studio units, incorporating more ones and twos, et cetera. So all the guidance that we've been provided, we've tried to implement. And I think, you know, requests for the waivers that we have forward are reasonable, are justified. And the decision-making process on the waivers isn't community benefit or not community benefit. The standard is very different, and Mr. Haverdy could probably speak to that on how you, you know, the board's decision-making process is different. Do you mind speaking to that?
In terms of how it's different compared to...
Than a regular planning board decision-making process in that it's...
So that's if the chair wants to hear from him.
Please, well, Chris, I'd like to hear from you first, do you have a comment?
Well, yes, I mean, in relation to the waivers, I apologize, this letter hasn't been provided to the board, so we received it on Thursday, but I will get that over to you. Again, in relation to the fees being requested for waivers, bluntly, my recommendation to this board this evening, if we're going to be forced to consider those waivers, would be to deny those waivers and the fees. That's the recommendation that was provided in my letter back in August. In relation to all the other waivers we go through, there are a mixture of, you know, recommendations in relation to approval of them as they relate to as they relate to the 40B process and how it automatically waives some provisions of the zoning bylaw. As we've done with all other 40B processes, any of those process waivers, we deny them, but also acknowledge that they're still in effect under 40B. But that requires that we provide the information. A number of those recommendations from the waivers ask for additional information or for those waiver requests to be split out more. In relation to the community benefits, we did meet with the applicant, we've spoken at length about the community benefits, and bluntly, the town does not see significant community benefits being proposed in relation to the project that is being proposed. That is our stance, and that's the recommendation that I can provide this evening, so... In relation to those fee waivers, again, as I stated at the beginning, those are, you know, to say that those are done for every project is not a proper characterization, and I think those are always reviewed by those boards and evaluated in relation to the other benefits being provided. We certainly welcome some of the proposed amenity upgrades in relation to the potential park, in relation to some of the other benefits that were just outlined. We understand the impacts to the SHI that are done as a normal course for any 40B project and are not unique to this project, they're simply a benefit by proposing a 40B. We do not see those as moving the needle in relation to the project that is being proposed this evening, so...
Thank you.
If I might?
Yes.
A couple of things. First of all, if I was misunderstood, I apologize. I'm not trying to put a gun to anybody's head, I just wanted to advance the conversation, which was why we submitted the letter. And if you don't have it, it's premature to even try to discuss it without you having had the chance to read it, so it probably makes sense to defer it. You know, it is ultimately this board's decision, and I don't mean to suggest that you do it in a cavalier fashion for every development. You have done it in other developments. And I think that a level playing field, so to speak, and comparable efforts by the town through the waiver process to promote affordable housing in a consistent fashion is a valuable process and a valuable policy. And the application that you had just before ours sets at least the establishment of a particular fee waiver there with a recitation of community benefits that we think matches up at best comparable, and perhaps we exceed that. But, you know, it's worth at least you digesting it, and we can revisit the conversation at our next meeting.
If you don't mind, we'll distribute hard copies of that
That's fine.
to the board.
That's fine, you have five copies?
Yep, we do.
Obviously, we're not going to be able to review it tonight, but thank you for those.
They've already been emailed as well, so...
What is the magnitude of these fees to help me as a new person understand? Are they 100 grand, or a million dollars, or $5, or what?
If you don't mind through the chair? If you go to Mark's last page of the letter that was just handed to you, you'll go to Exhibit A, and you'll see the fees. And for example, preliminary calculation of the water connection fee, $602,000. Water conservation fee, $75,750. Sewer connection fee, $2,407,200. Estimated building permit fee, $868,800. For a total fee program of $3,953,750. The deducts on it, Mark went through and provided some analysis versus the project that was just before us. But the decision-making process, and I like to raise that point because it is different. Under the 40B program, the question is, does it, the waiver request, exceed the need for affordable housing? And if you're under 10%, that answer is to our advantage, that the waiver is reasonable.
So, under the 40B process, under the 40B process, the board has the authority to consider the fees. I don't want to get into those level of details of percentages and things like that. The board, as we've stated, has the ability to consider the waiver request provided, presented to them. This is a waiver request of over $3 million in fees for what?
We have nine lines of commentary on what the community benefit is, and there's not a whole lot there.
And so I think, to Mr. Mark Donahue's, Attorney Donahue's point, I think it's prudent to have this conversation and digest the information that's been provided, not necessarily in this forum, so...
Correct.
That's all we had to present unless the board has any particular questions of any of the consultants here or of Mr. Calhoun, obviously, glad he answered any particular questions. If not, we will digest the information in the Bowman letter and be prepared to have a response to you for the next meeting. My letter indicates that we owe you a couple of pieces of information that we'll endeavor to try to get you well ahead of time, so you'll have a chance to digest that also.
Any comments, questions before we continue?
I'll keep my mouth shut right now.
You have a chance.
I don't have anything to say right now.
Paul?
Jer, can I?
Please.
Just really briefly, and I don't want to put my thumb on the scale in any way regarding these requests. I do want to point out, I was involved in a prior 40B application here in the town of Shrewsbury where there were waivers granted of the sewer connection fees, and that was in return for work that would be done by the applicant on the actual sewer system. And it was done in consultation with the sewer departments. I've been involved in quite a number of 40B developments where waivers of local fees have been granted. Every single time, it has been with the feedback from the body whose fees were going to be waived. According to my calculations, you have until December 29th to close this public hearing. So to the extent that you're going to have a conversation about waiver of any local fees, I think that you should reach out to these departments and bring them in so that they can be part of that conversation.
I think it's very fair, good guidance.
Do you think that ad hoc committee to talk about this with the board? Can't do that?
We can't do that. Okay, against open meeting, but certainly we can consult with the town as often, frequently as you need to make the determination.
No, I understand. I just wondered if we could do that, that's all.
Madam Chair, just for your convenience, we brought hard copies of Vanessa's response, October twenty-third, our traffic engineer's letter. We'll give you hard copies of that. We have hard copies of Graves' letter. We also have hard copies of Bowman's. We made the copies, so we might as well hand them over to you.
Sure, we'll take them. More paper, the better. All right, while he's handing out the copies, I'm going to see if there's any public comment, anybody wishes to be heard. Please step forward, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
Hello, Mary Dionne, three twenty-three North Quinn Sig. I do have a couple of questions with the traffic.
Thank you.
And anything happening with the DOT about putting that third right-hand turn for the two ninety on North Quinn Sig? Because that was definitely, I know last meeting you said that you had a a meeting with the DOT, and they seem responsive. I just can't imagine how the project's going to go through without having that extra lane there.
We did have a meeting. Town officials also participated in that meeting. Everything was submitted. Mast dot was supposed to get back. They haven't yet. We'll try to push that along so we can try to get an answer before next time, the best we can.
Thank you.
With the snow storage, I would imagine it would, in that snow, is going to be salt and chemicals. How would that be handled with being so close to the lake?
Yes, Mr. Kader, Kader, would I respond?
We'll share.
We will. We're all in this together, unfortunately.
So, just to address the snow storage, because there's two levels of it, and Graves certainly brought it up in their peer review letter, and the applicant is responsible for this, so. Where we can, we will store snow on site, and those snow storage areas will intentionally be chosen that they ultimately drain, melt into our stormwater system. So, that process, any sands, any salts, excuse me, sands and salts that would be in there are removed through that process. Now, salt is a soluble product. Once it's in solution, it's actually really hard to extract that. So, what we often will recommend is using low sodium, low salt as part of the de-icing methods because removing soluble salt is a very difficult process. Municipalities, Mast dot, you, with all due respect, tend to get a pass because salt is a very well-used, widely-used product, and unfortunately, the quantities which the state and the town may put down on the ground will far outweigh what we can do on the site. That's just the reality of it. But we would advise the applicant, the owner, to use low-salt products. Number two, the other element that Mr. Walsh pointed out is that we would be removing snow from the site. So, obviously, in terms of effects from the lake, none, because it would actually be removed from the process. But I would be remiss to not take the opportunity to say that we have a very specific snow removal protocol, policy that Mast DEP has implemented that we need to follow so that way we're not taking it away from your lake and putting it into somebody else's lake. So, there are rules that we have to follow. They can only, the snow can only go to certain areas. They have to be accepted to Mast DEP in order for us to use them. So, through the chair, to the abutter, does that answer the question?
Kind of, yeah.
I'm happy to elaborate more.
I don't think you're going to have a lot of storage area there for snow, so is your plan to get rid of it if we have snow, like we, last year we had quite a bit?
So, our obligation is to make sure the site is operational, and operational takes several terms. It encompasses several terms. Number one is we have to make sure the site is accessible for emergency apparatus, ambulatory care, and fire. So, that is absolutely number one, and our main responsibility, even at the inconvenience to the residents, is to make sure the site is accessible. And then, under typical snow management through the property management company, is then to make sure the site is now accessible to all the residents to both enter and leave their homes on normal daily business. Sometimes that process is delayed, dependent on the amount of snowfall that we get or the frequency at which the snowfall falls, whether it's a storm on a Monday and a storm on a Wednesday. By the time you get to Wednesday, you may not have fully reacted to the storm from Monday. My response to that is, we have property management groups in place for this exact reason, and they have to have contingency plans with snow plowing companies, haulers, et cetera, to remove this, to put it into inconsequential areas temporarily until such time as all of those levels of snow removal can be addressed. It sounds easy, but it's actually very complicated. There's no denying that the site is fairly dense. It adds an additional layer of complexity to that process, but, you know, we're prepared to undertake that, and we'll make sure the property manager, you know, has has that guidance well-established, obviously, well before occupancy. That's part of what we need to do for site management.
Still good, or more?
Well, you've got to have something in place. You can't wait two days.
Okay.
We will have something. Through the chair, we'll have something.
Thank you. Chris?
I just want to provide two clarifications in relation to that. So, as we get closer to conditions, some of the standard conditions that we include is that all snow that is not safely stored on site will need to be removed. You know, they alluded to some of the timelines that are allowable within that. It's enforcement with the zoning, or the zoning enforcement officer. But that is a condition we hold, so. We also noted in our initial comment letter that the snow storage is very limited in how much is provided. That condition gives us a safety valve that will all have to be trucked off-site. In relation to the icing and impacts on the lake, this is in the aquifer protection overlay zone. That is one of the required, the requested waivers is to waive requirements of the aquifer protection overlay zone. Our recommendation is to deny that waiver. One of that would institute a condition that there'd be no salt-based de-icing chemicals used for that, so they would have to use alternative environmentally sound de-icing agents.
Am I correct in that I heard that the parking is adequate? Is enough? I know with the previous developer, they didn't think it was enough, but with this one, we do think it's enough?
That's according to the peer review, yes.
That's okay. And I'm happy to hear about the Sky Lounge. Curious to see if we could see a view of this, of what it will look like?
Through the chair.
Well, I mean, what it's going to be looking out at.
You're going to be looking out at the lake, and then you're going to be hopefully looking down the lake is where it will go.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you, if there's some way to create that view?
I don't think we can create the view, but we can certainly hope for the view. That's our goal. It'd be the same view that those apartments would have, except it's making it now so that people on the lower level have a place they can go and use it as well. We found that it's been greatly supported by the people who live there in apartments, so.
Well, I'm supportive of it because I'm a Lake Quinn Sigman person. I'm just curious what it would look like, what you're going to be seeing. Are you just going to be seeing two ninety? Are you going to be seeing the roof of my house?
You'd actually, to see the roof of your house, you'd have to go to the rail and look down, because you're so far down in grades. You should be able, obviously, you'll be able to see the whole upper part of Lake Quinn Sigman, and you should be able to have a pretty dark-going view that would take you to about the one-thousand-meter mark if you go from the bridge and you go down a thousand meters. After that, you'll lose the view, I believe. So, once you get past, you know where the old ramp is, where the cars park, I don't think you'll be able to see much beyond that, but you might. It's going to be pretty neatly hoped.
And is, would we be able to see a view, a sketch of what the actual building? I know we got the layout, but like the other developers showed what the buildings would look like on the outside. Do we have anything like that?
We've already walked through those, yes.
I don't, we never seen.
Not with the Sky Lounge, just the previous.
We can, we can put together something with the Sky Lounge.
We'll bring it together. We'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, just curious what it's actually, the physical outside is going to look like. With the question about, I read a road in that left-hand turn. I don't think that impacts the traffic at all. I think there's very few people making left-hand turns, and I think that light is probably set up that it will only do that if somebody's parked there.
It's off the table at this point, so. Mood issue.
And curious where the Wheelock name came from?
Old, I believe it's the original name of the gentleman who founded Shrewsbury.
Let's go back, check that one.
No.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Okay.
That's what it came up.
That's your homework for the next meeting.
Well, the original founder was-
Another chat GPT.
I believe it's John, what you want to call it, Wheelock.
Okay, well, there we go. We'll be fact-checking that, I'm sure.
Fact-check.
Okay.
Wheelock.
Anyone else that wishes to be heard? Okay. Is that-
That's all the information we had. If there's anything that you're particularly missing for the next meeting, just please indicate. If not, then we will cover the things I just indicated that we'll cover, and we'll certainly be in touch to have some further communication through staff for the next month anyway, so.
Is there any comments before we move on? Okay. I think, I think we'll have more comments at the next meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Can I get a motion to continue, please?
Motion to continue this matter until November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I might remind the board, we do have a new business matter that we have to attend to.
Okay.
So, next on our agenda is new business regarding Forty-Five Roman Drive in Shrewsbury. Chris, would you like to help us with this?
Yeah, so I'll suggest this is an item that can probably be combined with the correspondence items that are provided for this evening in relation to the pool and pool equipment at Forty-Five Roman Drive. So, the board received a letter from an abutter to a project which installed a pool and pool equipment with some associated fencing. That project did receive zoning relief from this board previously. In relation to that letter, we wanted to provide a follow-up of some additional context. We know some of the members have changed, but provided, we provided a follow-up letter in relation to that to provide some additional context in relation to enforcement actions and discussions that I've had with staff through that permitting process that is outside of the board's typical review, so. So, that is post-approval of it, some of the administrative discussion that went on, so. Patty Sheehan, the Building Inspector, is available as well. But we wanted to bring this to the board's attention just in relation to the letter that was received, as well as the follow-up letter from the, from our office in coordination with Patty as well and the Building Department. So, the most pressing item, I think, for the board to consider and review is if the pool equipment location is in keeping with the approval that was granted and the relief that was granted, or if staff should be directed to take some additional action in relation to enforcing the decision of the board. So, I believe all of those materials were provided. I'm happy to kind of step through any discussion that needs to happen in relation to that and take your direction of where to proceed.
You want to start, Ann?
Yeah. So, if I understand correctly, the, there was a pool built, there's supposed to be a fence put around the entire pool area in compliance with state law, and that the fence carved out the pool pumping equipment such that the fence goes around, and then it doesn't include the pool pumping equipment, and it goes all the way around after that, and that so it's, so that's right, right? Okay.
Correct, yeah. So, the original application represented that the fence, it was the pool and equipment to be enclosed by the six-foot vinyl fence. The, as-built conditions include a jog in the fence, which puts the pool equipment outside of the fence and is one of the main features of the complaint that was received.
And it's in, the, the pool equipment is in view of the neighbor, the abutting neighbor, but not in the view of the person who's receiving the benefit of the pool? Is that fair?
Is the, is the fence around the pool outside of the bump that they created otherwise rectangular or like following the shape of the pool? But it's like, it, I guess what I'm asking is, is it like starkly obvious that they're like, we really want this stuff on the outside? They don't want to be looking at it.
So, yeah, so I think that is the jog in the fence is clearly to place the pool equipment outside of the visible view shed of the pool.
Yeah, are there any pictures that we can see?
Do they have that there?
Yeah, I'll put it up on them.
So, how does this work? Did somebody file a complaint?
Yes. So, Ms. Sheehan, maybe you could just give us your-
Give us, give us-
Sorry, one second.
One second.
Sorry, I had to rejoin. Wasn't quick enough. I'll just pull up the plans, but.
While we're waiting, I'll just ask everybody to scroll down to the bottom where it says requested action by the ZBA, and I think that will help focus our discussion tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
So, is it is it fair to say that this this has not been adequately resolved between a neighbor-to-neighbor discussion? So, the neighbors could not get to a resolution on this, which is why it's in front of our board?
Correct. So, the, I think the triggering factor was that we received a letter, and we wanted to provide that additional context in relation to that letter and some of the details that were being provided. So, we wanted that additional context to help the board understand kind of the ongoing issue, but to my understanding, to date, neither the neighbor or the homeowner have resolved this issue to their understanding.
So, I'm just hoping, hoping that Ms. Sheehan could articulate what is the perceived zoning violation here and what you're asking the board to review?
Right, so Patty Sheehan, the Building Commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, so this is a two thousand twenty-three issue that has been going on for quite some time, that it remains unresolved. So, the pool equipment, and you do see it labeled there with one of the, yeah, where Chris is pointing to. So, the pool equipment is located right in that rectangular area.
There's a fence here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the fence jogs around the pool, leaving the pool equipment on the outside of the fence from the, from the owner at Forty-Five Roman Drive. So, the pool equipment is outside of the pool barrier-
So, the pool equipment is outside of the pool barrier enclosure and not within it. So, the, the issue that we have here is that we have a table for accessory structures, which the interpretation of pool equipment is accessory, because it's overall less than two hundred square feet in size generally where the pool equipment is, and so therefore it has to meet a ten-foot side and rear yard setback. This is just about on the property line, and in addition to that, the fence is not representative as to where it would be placed on the original plan. There's supposed to be, the application states a six-foot vinyl fence around the entire enclosure with plantings. That's what the application states, but that's not the case for the pool equipment.
Okay, so it, it, it would seem that the as-built conditions are not what was reflected in the documentation that, that the board had reviewed in order to make its decision.
That's right. This, this condition is not shown on the plan submitted with the application.
And the, um, based upon this, there would be fines assessed in accordance with section seven C. Is that correct?
That's right, so we have, as we always do, like to educate, um, the owner of the property. So, we've had some notes in the permit application for quite some time that have gone unaddressed about this specific issue. I also performed a site visit and met the owner on-site and spoke with him about, um, about this and what some options may be, um, to correct not only this violation, but the other one is that there is a shed that is also labeled there on the plan. Um, it is less than two hundred square feet, but it does need to meet the two, the ten-foot rear yard setback. So, both those items need to be resolved, and so we're trying, taking this step to work with the board to recognize that the existing conditions do not match what was proposed in the two thousand and twenty-three application, and then get some direction for further enforcement with the owner. If we don't, if we don't get voluntary compliance, which is what we'd like first.
Have we just, we've tried to get voluntary compliance?
Correct.
Okay, and the owner, I assume, is not here?
Correct.
Okay.
And it also looks like, sorry, uh, that you gave the, the owner the opportunity to respond in writing and that they declined to do so, they specifically declined to do so.
The owner, um, did respond in, um, in the application, directly in the application, and, um, basically, um, gave some information, but no, no information that would resolve this. And may choose, he may decide, I should put it that way, decide to submit a ZBA application to get a variance for the shed, because that's what would be required if the shed was gonna be left in that location, rather than move it to meet the ten-foot, um, rear yard setback. So, that's an option to apply for that variance, and it is an option to apply for the variance for the pool equipment as well. But, um, that was an option, we also discussed some other sound attenuation barriers to go at the pool filter location as well. And the other option is to, of course, put the fence, um, continue the fence straight along the back property line rather than jog it.
And was that a suggestion that you made to the owner?
Yeah, all these options were discussed on-site at the owner's property.
And, and the owner has?
He, he hasn't, he hasn't proposed a solution yet.
I see, okay.
Is the pool installed per the original plan?
The pool is installed.
Okay, so it's just the shed, essentially.
So, it's the accessory structure, the accessories that go along with the pool?
Right.
Yeah.
And, and based on the bylaw, those should technically be at that ten-foot setback, which is that northern edge of the pool, according to the original plan?
Right.
Okay.
Have we corresponded with the owner and told him he's got a problem?
Many times.
And you've met with him to try and work it out?
Yes, yes.
And he still hasn't responded to you?
He's responded, but not with a solution. We've had many conversations, but not with a solution.
So, do we turn up the heat on this guy?
Well, I mean, I think what we could do next is request that he come in front of our board for a variance, and that I think would allow us to listen to the owner.
Okay.
And understand his position, and put us in a better situation to resolve this.
But we did that once with this owner, gave him a variance.
He, he's received a variance.
He didn't comply with the var.
So, he received a variance for the pool, so, um, what? So, fence, so at, at that stage, typically, you know, fencing and, uh, pool equipment aren't fully detailed in the plot plans that you're, that you receive. Um, they show generally the, the project as to be developed, and they provide very specific relief in, in relation to that, uh, more generalized plan. And so, um, then throughout the process of the actual construction, um, is where, um, that work is completed and reviewed at, um, uh, in both of our offices. So, as part of that process, uh, you know, what we're seeing is that the as-built conditions do not necessarily align with what was represented to the board. So, that's why we wanted to provide, you know, the opportunity for the board to say, no, this is in, within keeping of our, um, you know, process, and there is no issue here, or provide us the direction that, you know, additional relief is required, and we can then compel that, um, uh, enforcement action. So, but again, that level of detail isn't always defined on the plans, and so, this falls into that, um, area where, you know, we wanted, that, that's a, I, I think a decision that lies with the board, and we wanted to give that opportunity rather than, um, us make that determination.
I have a clarifying question about your letter. It's, uh, it says the requested action by the ZBA, there's item one and item two. That is, uh, you're requesting both of those items, not an either-or, correct? It says, you know, placement of the item on November twenty-fourth, meeting, et cetera, and number two, direct the Building Commissioner to issue a notice of zoning violation. Is that an and or an or?
So, I think it's a, and, uh, it can be an and or an or. So, um, the, I, I think the, the board has the ability to direct staff, um, to take one or any or all of those actions, um, as they see fit. So, again, that's why, I, I think it's a decision that lies with the board, is ultimately the, the granting authority. Um, and then we would enact that as the enforcement.
Well, just to share an opinion, I feel a request to the owner to appear before the board, uh, is a good idea. Uh, and then if they.
I could support that.
Fail to appear, or choose not to appear, then, uh, we can make our decision as we see fit.
I think it's a great idea.
But I don't think we have the authority to say, to, to completely control what the zoning enforcement officer does. If the zoning enforcement officer wants to issue a zoning enforcement notice, they absolutely can. But, uh, you know, I think it's, it's fair to bring, bring all the parties in with notice. Um, but I just wanted to put one more caveat, it's not our role to talk about the building code here, but I have a safety concern in that if the fence goes around and the pool equipment is outside of that, the opportunity exists for a child to climb up on the pool equipment and have, have less of a distance over the fence. So, I just am noting that, and if, if it's appropriate to issue a building code order or whatever, you, the, uh, Building Enforcement Officer always has that authority.
Yes.
Building Commissioner.
Mm-hmm, yes, thank you.
Yeah. So, should we entertain the motion?
Yeah, I just one question, quick question, in terms of the fees, can you just give us an idea of what we are talking about? I, I've never, in the fifteen years I've been on this board, had any involvement with assessment of fees. So, I would just be curious to know what those fees would look like.
So, an assessment of a fine?
A fine, rather, sorry, sorry.
Right, so, um, so we would assess a fine of, um, a hundred dollars for this first offense, and then, um, then the next offense would go up to five hundred dollars. Yeah.
Is it a one-time fee, or is it per day, or per month, or?
Yeah, so we, we've discussed this a few times, so it's, it's actually whatever is reasonable. So, we assess a fine of a hundred dollars, and in my opinion, we would, what I would do is give him a fourteen-day order, and that doesn't mean that this has to be corrected in fourteen days. That means that the solution proposed to correct it would have to be submitted within fourteen days, showing that there, that the owner is working with the town, um, to make the correction. And then if we don't get, um, any response to that, then we would continue with the fines. And that's when we would, um, talk with town council about how to move forward after that.
Would the, if you were to issue a fine today or tomorrow, um, would the fourteen days, uh, if they were to apply for a variance, would that give you? Okay.
So, the fourteen day, if, so if we issue a fine, and then the, that fine would have to be paid, because, uh, that fine would have to be paid. But the way to resolve the issue going forward would be to present a solution. And one of the solutions could be to submit a zoning board application.
Does everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to, um, agree with David that, to the extent that we invite him to come and speak and explain, and at the tail end of that letter say, should you not appear, then we will pursue administrative remedies, which may include fines.
But it, we don't have, this isn't a, you know, we're not a, a judge and jury here. We, they'd have to apply for a permit to come in front of us, to have us grant a variance for both the shed and the accessory.
Okay, so you're thinking you should just apply for a new variance?
That's the only way that I see that we can get this to be resolved.
Okay, okay.
Or, it, the alternative is just to issue the zoning enforcement order. We don't have to give, we don't have to, we don't hold the authority.
Right, Patty's ultimately the arbiter of this.
What I thi- the reason why I wanted to, to bring this to your attention is because obviously it wasn't represented this way in the original, um, application. The accessory, um, structures, if he had the accessory structures and they were within the setback, then obviously we would review them, you know, part of the building permit, and when we did a field inspection, we would note that. But obviously, the field inspection resulted in finding this. So, um, just bringing this to your attention and saying that we're gonna move forward with, you know, directing the owner that this is definitely a violation to issues the shed and the equipment. If he chooses to come before the board for a variance for both, then you would be well aware as to why he would be doing that. And then, um, until the outcome of the variance, uh, for these two things, if he requests that, then, um, if he's denied that variance, then of course, he has to correct this, or the fines would start again.
Okay, and this, um, again, just to be clear, there has been the attempt with the abutter to have this resolved, and it hasn't, has continually not.
Just to recognize, Mr. Keenan, the abutter is here, yes, and it has been, we have attempted to resolve it. I've attempted to resolve it, sorry, with the owner. I'm not sure, you know, obviously it's not an open public meeting for any other comments, but.
Right.
I believe the two neighbors have represented that they've talked.
So, what's the board's determination on this?
To do this by motion, or can we just, okay?
No, I was just providing direction to us, I think, um, which I think I've gathered, uh, this evening that this is a, a zoning violation.
Yes.
Um, and that's the, the, the interpretation of the board. We'll take that and, uh, enact that, we'll require the variance, and, um, Patty, if, if she feels fit, um, can begin the fine process as well.
I also, you know, it's trying to, we've been here for three hours, right? We're all tired, it's a long meeting, we've put a lot of time and energy into the meeting. Um, it's frustrating to me that neighbors can't come up with their own solutions to this, and that we have to, as a board, spend time on this. Um, that's frustrating to me, as I can only imagine it would be frustrating to the neighbors and to the zoning enforcement officer. So, I would just go on record as saying that. All right. Thank you, that looks like it's the last item on our agenda, unless I am missing something? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion, I move to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.